Wonderful. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for the District of Squamish from March 25. My name is Councillor Stoner and as Acting Mayor this month I'll be chairing the meeting. Hot Squalling, we select to make that school home is Oak Mill. We are fortunate to be meeting today on the traditional unceded territory of the Squamish Nation. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestream recorded and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have any concerns, you can notify our corporate officer who is Melissa, who is not currently in the room, but she will be here in a moment. We also have some members of the media present, so if you don't want your pictures taken, please direct any inquiries or concerns to them. Council, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda today? Please move by councillor French, seconded by Mayor Hurford. Any opposed? Motion carries. I will also recognize that we have councillor Hamilton who's joining us online, so he's not here in the room, but he is with us this evening, this afternoon. And we will move on to our agenda. We're starting today with an RCMP year-end presentation. We're fortunate to have a team from the RCMP here, but I'll pass it over to Inspector Dykstra to get us going and introduce who he has around the table. Thanks.
I'm actually gonna pass that to Staff Sergeant Bradley. Let him do the introductions.
Sorry, Staff Sergeant Bradley. Over to you.
Through the Chair, Mayor and Council and staff members. Really appreciate having our delegation here today. We have Inspector Dykstra, who's in charge of this Cedar Sky RCMP. We have our Officer Sergeant, Sergeant Dallas Langley. And we have our administrative supervisors in the back behind me here, Kim LaBrenns and Amanda Daly. I'd just like to pass it back over to the inspector to say a few opening remarks before we get on with the presentation.
That was faster than I expected. Yeah, no, I'm very happy to be here again. This is the fourth year for me now here in the Cedar Sky. So it's very exciting to be able to kind of see the transition and how things have changed over the last four years. Obviously, we're here today to do the 2024 year-end review. Staff Sergeant Bradley is going to give you some good information about what we've been accomplishing as a team over the last year and some statistics and some other information, just to let you know how well your team is performing here in Squamish. The one thing I wanted to kind of bring to your attention again is just a reminder, and this is just as important for everybody else's. You know, when we started this journey, you know, of some adjustments in the last four years. A couple of years ago, we started using the terminology your RCMP versus the RCMP. It kind of stuck with people. And the reason for that is when people would think about the RCMP, obviously, they think about us as a national organization, policing, federal policing. We have a lot of roles that we perform throughout the country, but when it comes to the work that we do here in the community, it's very much community-focused, community-based policing services. And so when it comes to the provision of those services, we actually provide them here and therefore, as a result, we are your RCMP. Yes, we are the RCMP, but when it comes to what we do in the community, we're your RCMP. And we want everybody in the community to think about us that way. We're here to serve you and to keep you safe and to do the things necessary in order to make sure that the community is, well, is safe and hopefully not, we can't make it crime-free, but we can certainly make it as crime-free as possible and provide whatever support we can to the people as they need it. So yeah, that's my introduction. I know Gareth's got a great presentation, so I'm going to pass it over to Gareth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Are we arrows? There we go. Right on. So this is just our mission statement for the Cedar Sky RCMP and the different jurisdictions that we use under the umbrella Cedar Sky RCMP, which Squamish calls. This is the Cedar Sky RCMP Strategic Plan that is derived out of the town halls and input from community partners as well as the police membership. This plan was created in 2003 and will run till 2028. With annual performance plan, we can conduct check-ins to ensure RCMP is on track and that the priorities are relevant to the current needs of the community. And this is our, the makeup of our leadership team as it currently stands. Most of those people are in the room right now. Absence is our GIS Commander Sergeant Jeff Shore, who's in charge of our plainclothes section. And then again, just our org structure as it's currently sits today. So just like to talk to you about some of the statistics, starting with property crime stats. We had a slight increase in the overall property crime stats this year, and the trend is increasing year over year. This is due to certain individuals that are in the community that are significantly committing the majority of the crime. Several strategies have been utilized over the past year to drive down these crime stats. These include focused enforcement strategies on prolific offenders, extra patrols and investigative training. Many of these focused investigations have recovered stolen vehicles, workers' tools, large cargo trailers, bikes and much, much more. Violent crime stats. Overall, in 2024, Squamish saw a decrease in violent crime with almost a 30% decrease in the amount of domestic violence calls for service. We continue strong victim support and have a full staff, a dedicated victim servicer workers to provide people with the resources they need. We continue our valued partnerships with our community agencies this year. Building strong partnerships and alliances helps integrate holistic services for victims of crime. Throughout the year, we've had serious shooting, which I'll discuss later in slides, and we've had several high-profile interprovincial domestic violence investigations that are very time-consuming. Recently, we've had a number of other police agencies, as everybody is aware, in Squamish conducting serious investigations in 2025. We continue to advocate for people who have been victims of crime. And we've even gone to the lengths of bringing Crown Council in as our detachment is a fairly junior detachment to help train our new members in writing reports and navigating legal frameworks. Sorry. So statistics on Mental Health Act. Squamish RCMP has seen an overall increase by 17% in the number of mental health calls for service. So that's the top number there. There's a little bit of confusion. So mental health-related files have decreased overall, but the total Mental Health Act files are captured. Say like a causing the disturbance file as it's originally categorized as it comes in might have an underlying mental health aspect to it or mischief, somebody throwing rocks at cars or things like that. So that's kind of where the Total Mental Health Act has increased by 17%, but our actual mental health-related files, they're kind of like separated out a little bit. In 2024, the Squamish RCMP established a full-time mobile integrated crisis response team. This is where these Vancouver Coastal Health Clinician and RCMP member team up to assist with mental health, taking mental health calls for service. It enhances both agencies' ability to effectively respond to people in crisis while supporting with follows as and when needed. This program is saving lives and supports those in the community who are suffering from mental health issues. Some of our road safety statistics this year. Squamish has seen a 10% decrease in overall collisions. However, however, the severity of the collisions has increased significantly by about 15%. So the seriousness of the collision. There were many lengthy highway closures that required specialized police services from the Integrated Reconstruction Team, which comes from the Lower Mainland. These investigations are not taken lightly and we need to compete, complete a thorough scene assessment because someone's has life-threatening injuries or there is a fatality. We do everything we can to balance the integrity of the investigation with trying to find a way to open the highway and have traffic moving without compromising the evidence at scene. The victims of these events, especially where there's criminal element to it, deserve nothing less but than our best efforts. I think everybody would agree to this concept. I would also like to mention that we've completed a number of proactive road checks throughout the year. As you'll see, the impaired driving stats have decreased. We had 17 proactive roadblocks throughout the year, which increased the presence on the roadways and the and thrust driving down the number of impaired drivers on the roadway from last year. Each roadblock, I was pleased to see, you know, hundreds of cars being checked and, you know, we would go multiple days without seeing impaired drivers. So I was pretty, pretty pleased with that stat and seeing those numbers come through. Other calls for service. In 2024, there were 33% more missing persons files, which are high-risk investigations. These require a large amount of resources and we partner with our search and rescue teams to help assist us with a technical rescue of individuals. Often, these files are in the backcountry where people are stuck or injured, so they require a technical expertise. That's where our SAR partners are invaluable to us. I would also like to point out that we had a significant drop in false alarms. As you can see, there's 262 false alarms, 450 the year before, and 396 the year before that. We've been working hard with our biolabs teams and businesses to like reduce this number, which is, it takes a lot of time for us to go to these false alarms, check a business, make sure it's secure, call the owner back, turn off the alarm and and write the report and then have administrative staff review that single report. So a reduction in that category is a huge help to service delivery. Total calls for service over the year have remained virtually the same in the past three years. Statistically, we did see a slight decline in the amount of priority calls for service in 2024. So just over 8,400 files in total for last year. Let's just talk, discuss, sorry, significant investigations in 2024. Some of these are ongoing investigations, so we'll just discuss them, some of them in brief here. There were two major SAR files related to last year, first of which involved a multi-month search for missing hikers on Mount Atwell. This was a highly specialized rescue mission involving our search and rescue team locally, our RCMP air services, Lower Mainland Emergency Response Team and our Integrated Police Dog Team, which brought out, which brought the search to conclusion in July 2024. There's a significant amount of time invested in this, in bringing these people home to have closure for the family. The second major file was a natural disaster landslide at Lions Bay. This impacted many people in all the communities that used the Cedar Sky Highway. There was many technical aspects of having our police jurisdiction cut in half. And we're reviewing our business continuity plans in the, in the coming weeks to ensure that plans are in place to move bodies around as we have several officers that live in the Lower Mainland that couldn't get to work and vice versa. They couldn't get home, so caused a bit of an issue. There are several lessons learned from this event and the criminal investigation is ongoing. I would like to say a thank you to the emergency management team in Squamish, Ryan and Jenny and others, who made themselves available for questions and to provide support to Lions Bay in their time of crisis. So we really appreciate the support from Squamish for Lions Bay in this matter. Police were also called to downtown Squamish in early, early spring of 2024. We entered into an impaired driving, causing bodily harm investigation headed by our frontline team, our GD members. This investigation involved an impaired driver who hit several people, including an infant that was in a baby stroller. This baby stroller became lodged into a bumper of a vehicle which traveled many city blocks. It is a miracle that the infant was not seriously hurt and many bystanders actually assisted in the stopping this vehicle, so we're grateful to them. A 30-year-old man has been arrested and has been now been charged with two counts of impaired operation causing bodily harm, dangerous operation on a motor vehicle and failed to stop at scene of an accident. This is before the courts and a significant amount of time and police investigative techniques were used to gather evidence in this matter. Squamish RCMP were also called to report of a shooting in the fall of 2024. Plainclothes investigators opened up an attempted murder investigation as a 49-year-old man was shot by his neighbor after a dispute. This was an isolated incident, incident between the two parties and a 34-year-old male was arrested at the time and taken into custody. This files before the courts and charges have been forwarded to Crown for charge approval. Also, our GIS, GIS team, our plainclothes team has been investigating significant, significant international fraud that's been several different countries. Those files get very exciting when we talk about going to different countries. Totalling over a million dollars and this investigation is ongoing, dealing with a local business in town. Squamish Community Resource Team has also written several warrants, property crime offenders throughout the year. And we're able to secure many charges for various types of theft investigations. These include many files out of Squamish and Whistler where personal belongings, work tools, stolen vehicles, SAR gear, bikes, motorcycles and trailers were stolen over several months. Several people are arrested for these crimes and the Squamish Community Team had put management orders to seize a Ford Lightning and a 30-foot work trailer as proceeds of crime. This is great work, lots of investigative techniques used in these files. And return of the SAR gear is really appreciated. I think it was a Pemberton SAR, so small team really hit home for them to get all their gear back, so. Oh, where are we? Yeah, here we go. Community policing initiatives. In June of 2024, Squamish RCMP and the Squamish Nation held a welcome pole ceremony at the detachment. This is the picture you see up here. I think most of you were there. This was an incredible project where members of Squamish Detachment partnered with Don Ross Indigenous Youth Council and Carver Art Harry. The goal of the project was to help youth learn traditional carving skills and build rapport with officers. So this happened over about a six-month period where we took this from a raw log, did the, the design of it and the kids would come every Thursday as a school, as after, at the end of school and we would, you know, have barbecues and they would learn all the traditional carving techniques. So this is a really neat project to be a part of. Community Response Team members attended schools and provided presentations on bullying and appropriate behavior, internet safety, safe fitness, as well as healthy lifestyles, RCMP career days, show and tell with the Integrated Police Dog Services. I know they like going into the schools with the little ones. We presented many safety regulation presentations about e-bikes as this was requested by the schools. So we, we attended most schools in town to talk about bike and e-bike safety. We did bike rodeos, school lockdowns. And yeah, there's a lot of community engagement going on in, in Squamish. And we appreciate all the support we get from School District 48 to want us to be going to the school. We really appreciate and value those partnerships. We also had the opportunity, I don't think most of you know this, but to host a Pearls and Policing cultural event. So Squamish was chosen to host a high-ranking police officials from around the world to learn how our Integrated First Nations Team and Squamish officers practice reconciliation in the community with the Squamish Nation. Our participants were also able to paddle together as a team in the detachment canoe on Alice Lake and they were taught about the historical significance of the area so they can take that back and do the same teachings in their respective parts of the world. In November, members of the Squamish RCMP, Squamish Fire Rescue and Marine Search and Rescue attended Walmart for the annual toy drive. I've been here 12 years and I think we've been doing, I've been doing Crown the Cruiser and toy drives for 12 years. And each year this keeps getting bigger and bigger, which I'm very excited for. We raised a lot of charitable donations, including food, money and toy donations for the Squamish Community Christmas Care. We'd like to thank all the community and business members that supported this initiative in November. It's always in November. Remember that. Members of the Squamish Detachment also hosted a regimental dinner in September of 2024. We ended up raising $10,000 for Honor House in New Westminster, which provides a place for military and first responder families to stay free of charge if they're receiving medical treatment in the Lower Mainland. So we're excited to hand that donation over. And we got a tour of the facility, so it was quite neat to see. They were quite ecstatic. This slide, I'd just like to talk, there's a couple of different crimes that I would like to kind of highlight. And fraud awareness is one. I know the, we dropped about about 10% in our frauds last year. We worked really hard with businesses and partnering with people to try to drive this because we saw 75% increase the year before. But Squamish residents are still being subject to a multitude of different types of frauds and we'd like to highlight this. Several types of frauds were still prevalent involving text message phishing scams, emails. These are the most common ones that we're seeing in Squamish. Types that, that you know, your account has been locked, please click, click this link. There's social media ads on discounted items, you know, if it looks too good to be true, it probably is. Platforms such as Facebook, Instagram and TikTok have all advertisements to make revenue. Criminals are using this as a tool to trick people into believing they can collect a prize. Have an unreal investment opportunity for them or purchase items at a large discount. There's also the grandparent emergency scams where someone's posing as a grandchild and calls the victim and pretends to have an emergency or needing, needing some money to get out of jail or bail. There's significant amount of romance scams, which can be financially devastating because people have become so emotionally involved in these types of crimes. People are encouraged to call the police. As we know, people can feel ashamed or embarrassed at, at being victimized by one of these crimes. And we need to them to know that the police and victim services will be there to help them. This crime is like highly under-reported, right? We want to make sure people are getting the awareness and education and prevention and help and assistance from our victim services team for these types of files. And with that, we're moving into kind of an era where AI will be dominating this. We're already seeing files where family members' voices are being translated and in, put into an AI platform and a fraud is being committed with that material. It's, yeah, it's becoming interesting. So with that, I want to try to get ahead of it and that, I want to try to get ahead of it and we have people informed and educated on these topics. So I'm going to host a fraud town hall later in the year and I'm hoping that a lot of people would come to that in Squamish. We'll bring some specialists in to answer questions and some teams from our RCMP, Financial Integrity and have an all, all round, well-rounded panel to talk about fraud awareness and technology. So I'm looking forward to that. Property crime awareness. As I mentioned earlier, we're at a rise in property crime overall, specifically theft of automobiles and theft from vehicles. We know that most of these crimes can be prevented by simply locking or taking your valuables out of your vehicle. We've also seen an increase in theft of groceries from grocery stores. And these are not usually ending up in charges being afforded, but we still get called to go and help the store provide a banning letter. Focused enforcement throughout the year has been successful and led to a number of new charges against several, several individuals in the community regarding property crime investigations. Been successful in adding a few of these names to the Repeat Violent Offender Program, the Rovi Program. This is where the, this program is led by Crown Council and partner agencies to share information, provide criminal law advice and provide independent prosecutorial support to law enforcement agencies. There we go. I just wanted to talk a little bit about youth crime. In 2024, there's been a significant increase in the youth-related mischief and vandalism throughout Squamish. Small cohort or youth have caused a significant amount of damage to people's homes, including several arson's, racist graffiti, significant damage to a local BMX track, golf course and much more. We have, and this again, this crime is highly under reported because I see it on Facebook all the time, people complaining about their door being kicked and not calling the police. So we really encourage people to call the police when this type of crime is happening and we just wanted to highlight that the folks that are being targeted are not alone. We've calculated there is at least $42,000 worth of damage to people's homes in 2024. This is where you can see in the pictures up here, the kids are kicking the door frames to the point where they're breaking them and the whole door has to be replaced. We're talking about senior, senior citizens. You know, doors are very, very expensive to replace. Sorry, I lost my spike. Majority of the time the kids are kicking the doors to people's homes and everybody's becoming increasingly frustrated. The last two Halloweens have also been chaotic within key with even with increased police presence. This year's Halloween is going to look a lot different. There will be many conversations with partner agencies and many more police resources will be brought in to provide the necessary public safety that is needed in these areas. I'd like to address a comment that I was made aware of the other day. A member of the public was concerned that the RCMP was not doing enough to tackle kids riding e-bikes in a dangerous manner. And again, I can tell you, we cannot be everywhere following every kid on every bike. What I can tell you is that we attend many schools and provide education to kids about the consequences of not wearing helmets, following the rules of the road and riding in an unsafe manner. E-bikes have an incredible amount of power and a little slip or a little fall could have devastating consequences. We have seized a number of SIRON bikes, which are not legally allowed to be on the road. And we've written a number of expensive no insurance tickets to those individuals riding on the roadways. We've even gone to the vendors to provide there we go, education about the issues that we're seeing and we have assured, been assured by the businesses, the people who are purchasing these bikes are being told that they're not street legal. We've also conducted speed enforcement on local pathways. Again, guys, we're conducting, police are conducting speed enforcement on local pathways for e-bikes, but this is important to the community because nothing's being regulated at this point. We've provided education, prevention and enforcement on these issues and encouraged people to continue to have safety conversations with their own children. Let me make this clear. We do not like spending our time chasing kids around where appropriate and charges are warranted, we will proceed. We do our best to educate the kids on the rules. However, this is more than just a policing problem and we're going to take a firm stance on ticketed tickets and charges moving forward. We do also have restorative justice options through Crown Council that can be explored. Community partnerships. This year continued with seasonal policing initiatives in the back country and partnerships with our Squamish Biolot team, Squamish Nation, Natural Resource Officers and Conservation. Squamish Marine Search and Rescue also aided us in a number of water-based investigations over the past year, including a missing child who was lost at the top of Anvil Land. We need their assistance because we don't have a vessel that can operate in choppy waters or over the winter season. So we have to rely on Marines are. We continued supporting our Integrated First Nation Member Constable Kelly Dean, who is a pillar of the community and helps in helping educate our new members on the importance of Squamish Nation culture and traditional areas. What we got in store for 2025, we have building bridges workshops. As I mentioned, we have a lot of new members. So this is an important piece in our building blocks for new members to learn about the impacts of colonization. Surveys will also be sent out to key partners to focus on community priorities as well have enhanced marine and road safety initiatives in the upcoming year in 2025. As a detachment, we prioritized our investment in IT equipment over the past year and we were pleased to announce that we have two drone operators, trained RCMP members and a drone in the detachment, which will provide valuable service for a number of different investigations, including our collisions and searching for missing people. Further to this, we have body worn cameras coming in the fall of 2025 and we're working with LMD detachments to get ahead of the implementation and to see what the best practice is in some of the detachments that are doing the pilot projects. We expect this to increase the overall workload with these, with the processes in place, which include downloading, disclosure, storage and redaction of the videos. Body worn cameras will also enhance accountability, support best evidence and efficiently address public complaints. And finally, we're working with our integrated agencies within RCMP to identify the need for a larger police boat to effectively, effectively respond to water-based calls for service. This internal need to be approved by the province in a business case that's been forwarded. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the very fulsome update. It's been a busy year. Counsel, I'll go to you for questions and just remember we do have a full agenda this afternoon. So we'll try and keep them short. We'll start with Counselor Anderson. Go ahead.
Thank you. I note there's quite an increase in auto theft that's reported in your report to up 188%. I just wondered if that may be reflect an increase presence of organized crime targeting this region for auto theft. Is there any observation you can make about that big jump?
You know, as I mentioned in my presentation, it's, it's more focused into a couple prolific offenders that have been in town. They do a majority of the crime and we see this, it's not uncommon for them to steal one car, go to another jurisdiction, steal another car, come back and do the, so it adds up quite quickly.
Thank you. I note that it's, it's always been there in your reports, but it just occurred to me to ask about Bowen Island being a part of the jurisdiction of the current of your detachment. Most administrative jurisdictions, including Squamish, don't include Bowen Island, but of course next door, we have the West Vancouver Municipal Police. My question is, does the inclusion of Bowen Island present any logistical clumsiness or challenges for you? Does it affect our, us as ratepayers?
I'll pass this over to Inspector Dexter.
Yeah, not with the Cedar Sky RCMP or with Squamish specifically. I mean, the Bowen Island RCMP is part of the Cedar Sky. They have their own detachment on the island with a corporal and two constables. It's a provincial detachment. Recently, this past year, they were also put under the command of the provincial sergeant that's in Pemberton. So we have a provincial sergeant that is overall responsible for both Pemberton and Bowen Island. Like anything else within the Cedar Sky, one of the great things about being integrated is that we have the ability and flexibility to support each other when needed. So if something were to happen in Bowen Island and they need additional assistance, we could rely on it, but it's not something that causes any substantial use of resources or any concerns for what happens in Squamish.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter. Finally, we have had co-housing as a new form of housing in the municipality has been on our agenda for discussion and talking with some of our local volunteers in other fields of protective services, they're making the observation that we need to tighten up on things like fire protection, sprinklers and this sort of thing. A couple of these individuals have brought forward the question as to whether there's any new policing burdens with co-housing types of forms. We have a few, few examples of them. Is there any observations you can make about increased calls to these people? Of course, our goal is to facilitate new, new and diverse types of housing, but is there, are there any observations that you could make regarding these, these facilities, these developments?
Yeah, I can take that one. Yeah, no, I think they're, for the most part, they're really well run. I can't off the top of my head recall, like I'd have to mine some of the data, but you know, some of the typical ones just over here by the school where the foundry is like, no, like I haven't heard of a call for service to that building. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Herford then Counselor Pedengill.
Thank you for the presentation and the work throughout the year and also congratulations. I heard there was a hockey game. That might be worth celebrating. So congratulations on that. My question though is on the impaired piece, you spoke to that in your presentation and I remember discussing this in, in a previous presentation, likely about a year ago around, just trying to like learn from those numbers and, and are we seeing at the time? The question was around like, are we seeing, are there more drunk drivers on the road? Is it, is it change in enforcement tactics that are seeing a spike in the number that you're, you know, you're, you're catching? And can you speak to the changer? Like what, were the methods the same more or less? You spoke about the, the roadblocks and that kind of thing. Are they about the same? And those numbers are actually you perceive as a, as an actual decrease in the number of impaired folks on the road? So I'm trying to make sense of those statistics.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely difficult, but anecdotally I can say we, we've had way more presence and roadblocks and visible presence on, on the roadways this year and reading the shift reports and seeing, you know, 100 cars being checked within like an hour or whatnot and seeing nobody, you know, impaired is like super impressive. So I would like to think that our presence on the roadway, conducting these impaired driving checks is part of our APP strategy in reducing road safety or sorry, increasing road safety and reducing the amount of drunk drivers on the road. And it's just one part of our strategy there.
Yeah, just going to add on that one there. It is anecdotal in nature, but with increased presence, it represents deterrence. When they see us on the road, when they see and hear about us, because these roadblocks do get quite a bit of attention because we annoy a lot of people during the roadblock. So it does get out there. The more we do that, the more people who do behave in such a way as they feel as though drinking and driving is okay, the less likely they are to do so. So can we say there's a one for one impact? Not 100% statistically, but anecdotally and just based on experience, 100%.
Yeah, thank you. It was great to see that. And just one more question if I, if I can. The, the false alarm piece I thought was quite interesting. Do we have any, is it possible to share the like, of the alarm calls that you get? What percentage does the, like, is this, is an alarm call more often than not false? Or is it a small percentage of the overall and you're responding to real alarms? And that piece I, I like, I didn't see in the, in the report. I was curious. We, you can, you can be a general if you don't have the specific.
Yeah, I don't have the specific, well, I can lay it out for you. 99% of the time, these calls are false, right? Yeah, there it's, yeah, it's the matter of people, businesses not being able to attend. We have to go because the alarm company has called us. So it's time to travel there, time to explore. If there is an insecure presence, sorry, a door or window, we will go in and, you know, make sure your business or home is not being targeted by anybody and will wait till it can be secured. So there's a lot of time involved.
Well, that, thank you. That really is useful context and highlights the need to do that work, especially when the context of crying wolf 99.9% of the time. So yeah, thank you for that. That's enough for me now. Chair, thank you.
Counselor Pedengill, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just clarifying a couple of numbers. I think there was a mention of serious, I think I heard highway accidents increasing. Is that serious in terms of dollar value because vehicles are more expensive or are we seeing more speeding or just poor driving or more vehicles? Like, do we know what the, the cause of that, that is?
Yeah, I think it's probably a little bit of both. I don't have any specific numbers, but I know that we had some pretty serious collisions last year and some fairly bad spots where we really couldn't just open up a lane of, of traffic. That's just the way the, the road configuration is, but I don't know if you've ever replaced a taillight. That's, you know, $10,000 gets eaten up quite quickly. Yeah. So that, that would drive that number up as well.
Okay, thank you. And then in the one chart, it lists Cannabis Act and Cannabis Control and Licensing Act and one number's improved, the other one has gotten worse. What are those or what is the sort of, the sort of problem we're seeing there? It seems small, but just wanting to understand what that actually means.
Yeah, those are super, you know, small numbers, significant percentage increase. Obviously, if you talk small numbers, but it's just side seizures of it, there isn't, we're not seizing a lot of marijuana because it is legalized. So that would be like, you know, 30, 30 grams of or more over, or somebody's turned in some drugs from, that they found somewhere and we've had to create a file about it.
Okay, thank you. And then actually the last thing, and I don't, I'm not sure if I misheard and I'm not sure if you, if I did hear correctly, you can expand on it, but I thought I heard something about a criminal investigation with regards to the Lions Bay slide. Was that correct or is there a criminal element there that can you expand on that? If that's.
Yeah, we do have an open investigation for what caused the slide.
Interesting. We'll go over to Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the brief update in your presentation on coordinated efforts around mental health and working with mental health workers. So just wondering above and beyond what we heard earlier, is there more you can share? Like, is the CAR 99 program still active and are there plans in the year ahead for more training of our RCMP members and best practices with interactions with neurodivergent folks?
Yes, yeah, it is still active. We had a bit of a transition with employees. So again, putting the training and developing their, their training platforms and the nurses are still, still in place. So that's, it's a critical piece. I've been asking for this for many, many years to have this program in place and I'm super excited that it's, it is in place. And yeah, we do do our training with new members about our neurodivergent kind of platform that we've developed with some behavioral therapists in town. I mean, it's a general overview of kind of how to deal with folks with sensory issues, for example. So.
Just going to jump in there as well and just add, I mean, having this, having the funding for that position has been amazing. This was our kind of our first full year having that position in, in play. So there's been lessons learned across the board for us, both in Whistler and here in Squamish. I think the great thing about it is the resource exists. We're doing follow-ups on mental health calls now that we weren't doing before, where we would simply respond to a mental health app call. We would deal with unseen and then that would be the end of it. We actually have our members that are part of that team actively following up with people in the community to find out how they're doing. There's that, that piece which makes sure that services that are provided through the nurses or through other services are being offered. This is, you know, it's something that wasn't done before and is having an impact.
That's really encouraging. Thanks for that. And one more, Chair. Does the Squamish detachment, you know, I'm going to rephrase this. High level, what's your complement situation? Are we fully staffed? Are we struggling with, with members? Can you share anything there?
Yes, we had a hard time this summer. I'm not going to lie. We had Yes, we had a hard time this summer, I'm not going to lie. We had a challenging time. Part of the, one of the challenges there RCMP is that members do move around quite a bit. It's less so here in places like Squamish where people do leave. You see people stay here for quite a bit of time, but there is some transition. People are interested in different opportunities. And so we had released some people this year to other opportunities with the expectation we were going to get bodies in return. Over the summer, we found that we just weren't getting the bodies. People weren't being released. As it stands now, we're in a position where the detachment is is much better off. We're getting two new cadets here in the next little while. One, I think it has one arrived, should be arriving in two weeks. And then we get another one in April, later in April. So we're getting two bodies. That brings our GD complement up to where we're only short a couple, couple positions. We do have some sick issues right now. We have some people that are off duty. But in almost all cases, there's active plans in place for them to return to work. So we're excited to be seeing them coming back. But we're in a better position than we were than we were in the summer. And we're actually taking steps to ensure that we're not releasing people unless we're, know we're getting people back. So yeah, it was challenging, but we're not in a bad position right now. Ideally, I'd like to see us more staffed. Our crew team has been, sorry, our crew team is kind of supporting GD right now, which is great because it gives us the flexibility to do that. But hopefully, as we move in through 2025, we're going to have our positions filled out. We are actually in a better position when you look at other detachments across the province. You know, when we're looking at rodable rates that are in the 60s to low 70s, there are a lot of detachments that are rodable rates of less than 50, 50%. So we've improved quite a bit in the last few months. So that answers your question. But I'm, as the inspector, I'm feeling confident in where we're headed.
I like the optimism. We'll go over to Councillor Greenlaw and Councillor Hamilton. Do you have any questions?
Thanks. Through the chair, I was just wondering, I noticed there is a sharp uptick in criminal harassment. And I was wondering if you could define criminal harassment.
Let me pull my criminal code. Yeah, I mean, harassment is a, it's a very difficult thing to kind of conceptualize, I guess. So like, if somebody's like, maybe a tenant is banging on the floor upstairs or people are, you know, it could be almost stalking behavior. Like, somebody's following somebody around, that sort of thing. So there's a lot of steps in before we forward any charges for that and a lot of consultation with Crown. And, you know, generally, people and parties are warned about their behavior. And if it continues, then they could face a criminal harassment charge. But yeah, lots of neighbor disputes as well.
Yeah, the criminal harassment piece almost always, in order to get that charge or get to that point, always involves one party having a fear for their safety. So there's a harassing behavior that leads to one person or a party or an individual getting to a point where they actually legitimately feel for their safety as an individual, for their personal safety, safety of their property, and that's when it becomes a criminal matter. So an assault hasn't actually taken place or there hasn't actually been a violent incident, but their harassment is leading a person to actually feeling unsafe. That's where the criminal harassment piece comes in.
Yeah, it was just, it's just a surprising uptick. It went from seven to 10 to 22 incidents this year. So I thought I would just ask about what it was and get a kind of idea of what that might look like out in community. The other thing I noticed a pretty sharp, an increase in was the mental health calls. And I was just wondering if there was a common denominator, if there is, you know, the same place, going back to the same place several times? Or if it's kind of throughout community or?
Yeah, I can answer that. No, it's a pretty standard throughout the community. There's not one specific spot that we've seen, seen this. Mental health affects a lot of people, right? So yeah, it's just, and I think we've had a lot more outreach and presence with our community car. They haven't had that proactive response before. The nursing team, VCH, everybody was going to work to them downtown. Now we can actually have that branch go out to the community, right? So it adds this kind of dynamic element to it.
Yeah, we're going to need to see what the stats look like next year, I would say. I mean, when you have a new unit like that's in place, we generate more files as well. So when we look at files that are created, it's not always a call that there's actually been a complaint or someone's made a complaint or an incident happens. Sometimes it's proactive work and they actually become files as well. So they get pushed into the stats. Again, having the CAR99 program in place means that we are generating more files on our own. The seriousness of those files would vary depending on, you know, what the incident dealing with is. I think if we take a look at next year and see how we are, if we're kind of running around the same or within a standard deviation, okay, for like in terms of this year, then we can say that that's probably the new norm. But I'm not, I'm not confident that we look at those numbers as that there's been an increase of issues in the community.
Right, just basically an increase of reporting effectively. Okay, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a few questions of my own. The control drugs and substances line is down not so much from 2023 to 2024, but 2022 to 2024 is quite substantive. And this is, I think, one of the first years that we have multiple years of data. So this is really exciting to see it kind of build year after year. But we saw 42 files in 2022 down to 20 in 2024. I'm just curious if that had anything to do with the decrim component.
Yeah, absolutely. It does, right? Personal possession changed that, being able to seize drugs and then dispose of them. Or now we have to, you know, if we come in contact with somebody and they're in our cells, we actually have to measure that and return that and provide updated information about harm, substance harm use and treatment and offers different services under that portfolio. So yeah, there is a significant decrease between that timeframe and the last two years.
Okay, that's really interesting to see that in the numbers. And then my other question was just as we go into the summer months, any reflections on the seasonal policing complement? If we have ever been successful in getting some more resources from the province? We know that there's continuous draws outside of the boundary of the District of Squamish. And that was an area of advocacy for a while. Just curious if we've seen any uptake there, if there's continued work to do.
No, I think there's still continued work to do. I mean, seasonal policing comes up every year. There is always ongoing conversations. It depends on, you know, how much money the province is willing to to invest. Really, when we look at the stats again, I mean, we've done some recent runs related to provincial policing. Within Squamish, there is another jurisdiction within the Cedar Sky that it's not this way. But within Squamish, the use of, say, municipal resources to support provincial policing, when you look at on a balance of percentages, the number of members that we have as a percentage, the actual volume of calls in the province is about the same. So when you look at it, there's not really a significant additional use of municipal resources. It looks that way if you take a municipal resource and they actually apply, they actually respond to a provincial call. But we have provincial resources. We have three RCMP officers that are provincial attached to the detachment. So when you look at that percentage, it's really not that substantial. So I don't think it's a major issue. I think what it becomes down to is really just about the fact that in the summertime, there is a significant increase in volume of activity. And so potentially, you know, we bring people in on overtime. Again, the overtime costs related to that all go against provincial budget. So it doesn't impact the Squamish initial budget, municipal budget.
Thank you for that. And with that, Council, we do have a motion to move or seat. I'm not seeing any further questions. Moved by Mayor Hereford, seconded by Councillor French. Any comments?
Just thank you for all of your work through and your team's work throughout the year. And I really appreciate and feel that it's not just framing the, your RCMP or our RCMP. So keep up the good work and thank you for the, for all the efforts and spending some time with us here today.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming for the detailed information. And as Mayor said, the amazing work that you do in community and in partnership in community. I think it's really speaks to how committed you are to the safety of our committee, of our community and making sure that everybody feels seen and welcome and safe. So thanks for the work and thanks for the presentation. We'll see you next year, if not before. Call the question. Thank you. All those in favor, motion moved unanimously. Thank you. Keeping me on my toes. Thank you, Councillor French. And we are running behind council, but we'll give folks five minutes to switch over. So they'll come over, just come back just before 2 o'clock. Thanks. Hello and welcome back to the Committee of the Whole for March 25th. We are on item 3 sub 2 under Delegations and Invite Presentations. And we have Karen Clark here, who's the Executive Director from the Squamish Community Foundation for their annual update. And am I passing it over to you, Mr. Deo? No, straight over to Ms. Clark. Go ahead. I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting us in today to present on the 2024 Squamish Community Enhancement Grants. And I'm here on behalf of the Squamish Community Foundation. May I let this go? Yeah, very good. So I'm just going to take a second to talk about the Squamish Community Foundation. We've been in town since 2004. We're a member of the Community Foundations of Canada. And there's over 200 community foundations across the country that are a part of the Community Foundations of Canada. And what we all do is we receive donations and we turn those donations into endowment funds. And then we invest those, the endowment funds. And every year, the interest from those is what goes into our annual grants. So donation to the Squamish Community Foundation is basically a legacy. It's a long-term giving plan where it always gives back to the community through our annual grants program. So over the years, we've administered 1.6 million, which we're quite proud of. And we've also administered grants and programs for the federal government and the provincial government, as well as the District of Squamish. We released the vital signs reports and now we're doing living wage reports, which we will talk about briefly at the end of the presentation. So that is about us. And then, so this year for the 2024 Community Enhancement Grants, we received 27 applications with over 206,000 total granting requested. Fortunately, we were able to fund 25 of those applications, which we were pretty happy with. We don't normally get to do that. But so we were able to touch a lot of different programs in 2024. At the top of the list was health and wellness and mental health programs. Sorry, I amalgamated children and youth together. That's why that number is 16, but it was eight children and eight youth programs. Sport and outdoor recreation are at the top, as well as education and learning programs. Five vulnerable and low-income families and environmental stewardship programs, as well as some seniors and elders programs, four community events. And then we had three District of Squamish facility rentals. And on down the list, as you can see there, we were quite happy. We're steadily increasing our diversity, equity and inclusion in indigenous, indigenous specific programming, as well as women and gender diverse individuals, immigrants and newcomers. So each year we see an uptick in those types of applications that come to us. And especially in 2025, we've just run through that grant process. And we really saw quite an increase in diverse applications and we got a lot this year, but we'll talk about that next year. So we received three applications from Cedar Sky Community Services for different programs and two applications from the District of Squamish for different programs as well. The grant criteria have remained the same over the last couple of years. But basically, all applications have to meet one of the types of programming, which is decolonization and reconciliation, intergenerational programming, neighborhood connectivity, environmental stewardship, diversity, equity and inclusion, supportive physical health, mental health and social well-being, youth-led initiatives, Squamish's vulnerable populations and recreation programming. And so how the process goes is we receive the applications, I create the scoring matrix. And that is given to the Grants Committee, which is comprised of, as we try to bring as many diverse and represent the population as well as we can. So there's about usually from seven to nine people that sit on the committee. They score all the applications, I collate those scores, and then we meet as a group and have a, have a discussion. And usually, the discussion is lively and quite interesting. And it's, it's neat to hear people's different views on, on what they think of programming and what they bring to the table. And it often changes the committee's views, a person on the committee view that they hadn't heard that view before. So this ranking, so this is from highest to lowest, just according to the matrices, the individual matrices. So Pearl Space was at the top in 2024, along with Community Christmas Care, Helping Hands, Squamish Nature Learners and Food Bank, they had the same score. That's why they're both number four there. And then on down, so for a total of $97,953. So you can see that we were asked for more than double for the funds of what we had. But yeah, so it was fairly diverse group there. But so in total, that is 25 applications that were funded or programs that were funded. But so in total, that is 25 applications that were funded or programs that were funded. So I'll just talk briefly about a few of the projects that were funded in 2024. We'll start with Cedar Sky Community Services, one of their programs, which they just started. And it's called Incorporating Indigenous Perspectives in Childcare Programs. Pretty exciting program where they're bringing in Squamish Nation elders to just be with the children there. And they sing songs, they do crafts, they tell stories, they drum, they dance. And we've heard nothing about, except for good feedback on, on what a great program this is. And there's Squamish Nation children in the, in the daycare. So there's a lot of great connection for them as well. So that program applied again in 2025, and we funded them again because we're hearing the outcomes are really great. So Squamish Helping Hands Society Recycle Bicycle Program. This was the second year that we funded this program. In 2024, they received and repaired 69 bikes. Fifty people attended an event that they held on June 1st, where they were able to distribute 28 bikes to children and families in need. And I guess the big news for the program this year was that they partnered with the Squamish Rebuild Society. And they've moved the program over to there. So I'm hearing that that's running well. Another program by Cedar Sky Community Services is the Healthy Pregnancy Outreach Program. This is a program that's been running in town for at least 20 years.
Since 1999.
1999. And I'm sorry, this is Suzie Solman. She is the Chair of the Squamish Community Foundation. Wars, yeah, sorry about that.
Also used to work at Cedar Sky, took care of that program for many years.
We both did.
Very important program.
Yeah, so we, we both really like this program because the health outcomes from this program is quite amazing. It supports pregnant and postpartum moms and, and families and small children. And we bring in speakers and share food. And it's really supports families, especially families at risk. And you can see the, the different lists of types of populations that will attend this program. So we can't recommend it enough. They, they were planning on running a Monday program, which I guess wasn't that well-attended. So instead, they decided to run these cooking groups where people learn cooking skills, and they also share food and get to take some food home. So that was, of course, a big winner, that one. They really, that was really well-attended. So overall, the HPOP program supported 153 individuals and their young families with food and connection throughout 2023 and 2024.
So a little unknown fact about the Healthy Pregnancy Outreach Program. It's federally funded, and it has not had an increase in funding since 1999.
Yeah, so they're.
They get a certain amount of money, it's $99,000, to run programming Squamish Pemberton. And as you can imagine, that's difficult over the years without an increase. So consistently, one of the ones that is always looking for other pots of money to make that program work.
But consistently showing great health outcomes from this.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to speak it off. There we go. Squamish Minor Hockey, we receive an application from them every year. They are providing an incredible program that supports almost 300 players every year and supports friendships, teamwork, fitness, and health. So they ask for funds to keep their registration fees down. So in 2024, with the funding that they received, they were able to maintain their, the same registration fees. Whistler Adaptive Sports, the Squamish program. So they, they're a fairly new program in Squamish, but very active already and really filling a gap in community with the adaptive sports programming. So they provide opportunities for swimming and snowshoeing, Nordic and Alpine skiing, hiking, biking, water sports, and kids camps. And the goal of their programming is to provide programming for disability or people living with disabilities to participate in amateur and recreational sport, increase physical literacy of people with disabilities, provide those living with disabilities a chance to connect with nature and outdoor spaces, and strengthen the reputation of Squamish as a community that is welcoming and inclusive of all types of residents. In 2024, they served 57 Squamish-based individuals, which is pretty impressive, I would say, for a new program in town with a range of disabilities. They attended 414 lessons, and they also have some individuals that participate in the ski program. They had a Squamish Tryout Day on August 8 at Alice Lake Park, and they were pretty happy with the turnout for that. And lastly, the Squamish Volunteer Centers Society, they applied for multi-year funding. And so they received two years of funding, and this was the first year. They had three parts of their programming that they wanted to receive support for. And one is their supporting and engaging volunteers. So they had this peer project where volunteers are partnered with, newcomers are partnered with longtime residents. And they had 33 volunteers involved in that. Twenty were immigrants, six were seniors, and six were folks with disabilities. So really wonderful program connecting different populations in town. They also wanted to put more book collections out, book collection bins out in the community. But I guess Big Brothers beat them to it so that they focused more on promoting their bookstore. They're, that's downtown. And doing some outreach around the bookstore so that we make sure that the books can stay here and support one of our local pop, local, local organizations. And then lastly, they were to run a celebrating Squamish Volunteers event during National Volunteer Week. They've had some staffing capacity issues, so weren't able to do that. They had a celebration for their own large group of volunteers. But they're hoping to have an event this year in 2025. So Observations from 2024, you've probably seen some of these before. But I feel like with the new policy that's being put in place, some of these subjects will be, will be addressed. So we will, as the Squamish Community Foundation, continue to review and update applications and guidelines. We hope to work with the DOS to establish whether organizations can submit more than one application to one stream for different programs. And I've mentioned this before, that, you know, we have applications for different programs from one organization. But we, they can't put in an application to the Arts and Culture Grant, which is, it, it just seems a bit strange. So we'd like to sort that out, and I'm hoping that the policy looks at that issue. We're hoping to work with the district on more clarity around organizations already receiving permissive tax exemptions, as well as establish clarity around DOS facility rental requests. So should we have a separate process for in-kind facility rentals? We received three this year. This year, the district wanted to have all of the grants not receive checks, but receive electronic fund transfers, and that's been a bit of a process for sure. So I'm assuming that next year will be a little more streamlined. And we'll be able to get grants out. So right now, I'm not even sure if everyone's been paid yet, but it's nice to get folks their grants at the beginning of January. So they have, you know, almost a year to work with their, their funds. And we're looking forward to, we have a one-year partnership agreement right now that's was in place for 2025. And we're hoping to have a new partnership agreement starting in 2026 at the district. So we'd like to thank the District of Squamish once again for the opportunity to administer these funds and also just for offering this type of support to the community. It's amazing. You can see how many groups are supported by this, this work. And I was asked to touch briefly on the Neighborhood Small Grants Program, which the District of Squamish puts funding towards as well. So we've been running the Neighborhood Small Grants Program since 2017. It is just, people love this program. They, we get so many applications. You can see in 2023, we received 66 applications. 2024, we were down a bit because the 66 was actually too much. Our little volunteer committee couldn't handle that much. So yeah, so we just had to reduce it a bit. But so the, it's funded by the Vancouver Foundation, as well as the $10,000 annually from the District of Squamish. We are making extra efforts to reach out to different populations in different neighborhoods. And we're seeing all kinds of new and innovative programs. And, you know, we've supported the reconciliation walk. We've supported libraries. There's been some sort of cultural dinners, and there's been like a market up in the Valley Cliff. So people, like, they take this little bit of money, up to $500 is all it is, and they do these incredible things with them. So we're pretty proud of that program. I just kind of wanted to let you know what's, what's going on with that. And that applications are opening again on April 1st this year, so just a week and a half away. And if you know of anybody or any neighborhood or groups that might be interested in this, please let them know. And there's one last thing that I just wanted to touch on again. This is it. This is the Living Wage Report, which we released in 2024. So we started working with the Living Wage BC Group, as well as the Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives. And we released the 2023 Living Wage in June. And then to catch up, we released the 2024 in November. And we will release it annually, every November, in partnership with Living Wage BC. So the living wage is the hourly amount that each of two working parents with two young children must earn to meet basic expenses. In this calculation, basic expenses include rent, childcare, food, and transportation after government taxes, credits, deductions, and subsidies are taken into account. So in 2023, there was, the wage was calculated for Squamish at $25.13. In 2024, it went up 6.5% and was calculated at $26.76. The reason for the increase, that much of an increase in one year, was mostly due to rent increase and food cost, is what they were saying. So they, this is a great document just for community discussion, to support employers and seeing what it's taking people to, to live here, or what it costs for people to live here. And we'll continue. We've had nothing but great feedback on the report. It kind of feeds into our Vital Signs Reports as well. And we'll continue to release them, as I say, until, yeah, as long as we can. So that's all I have, and thanks very much for your time.
Amazing. Thanks for the presentation, for all the work. The Living Wage in particular has been such an important resource for me, I know, sitting in the seat. So thanks for doing that work. Council, I'll go to you for questions for Ms. Clark. And recognizing that there are some elements that she brought up in her presentation that will be addressed in the next component of our agenda around the community agreement policy. So happy to, for you to direct questions to her on that if you want clarification. But also, we might direct them to our later conversation if that makes more sense to do so. So I see a hand here. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Firstly, in the presentation of grant recipients for the past year, some of the organizations have asterisks beside them. What does that denote?
So the asterisks beside them, so that's where the scores were the same. And so that you'll see that the number is also the same, like number four, there's two number fours. It just means the score was the same. Yeah.
My second question is concerning, under the observations, to work with the district to establish clarity around district facility rental requests. That is separate process for in-kind facility rentals. As our chair has pointed out, this is an issue that comes up later on this afternoon as we will be discussing the grants policy. It may be a question for Mr. Deo or Mr. Deo to advise us on. In that grants policy, there's a new clause for saying that applicants requesting grants for district fees or charges will no longer be eligible. So my question is, and I'll throw out the example of Squamish Days Lager Sports. Year after year, they would come and ask for a nominal amount for traffic control infrastructure for the parade and for the event at the Lager Sports Grounds, if that might be an example. But the question is, is there a particular direction or solution that might come forward as a recommendation for these facility rental things? Or have you deliberated this, or have you, are we heading somewhere in how to resolve that category?
Thanks for the question through the chair. Again, J. Deo, Director of Recreation Culture. The process has not been defined yet. We recognize that it doesn't belong here, and we need to create a process. But it still needs to be defined and operationalized. So we're not there yet.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council. Other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Penningell.
Yeah, thanks. Some great, great projects and love seeing all the sort of neat things the community is doing and different ways it's coming together. But I'm also, you know, the Vital Signs Report is one that I know gets a lot of readers amongst councils and local governments and so on. I'm wondering, though, who funds the development of Vital Signs and the Living Wage Reports?
So the Vital Signs Report, we actually have to look for funding. The last one that we released in 2023 was partially funded by Van City, or the Squamish Savings, and by an anonymous donor, actually. Yeah, was the other bit of funding there. So with the Living Wage Report, it actually, it doesn't cost us a whole lot. We do all of the creation of the report and provide some of the data. But the Living Wage BC actually does all of the work and produces the outline and most of the data.
Thank you, Council. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Greenlaw.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. How much does it cost to compile all the data for the Vital Signs, to produce that report? How much does it cost?
So we received $20,000 in funding, but it probably cost us closer to $30,000 to produce the report.
Thanks. Yeah, just to echo some of the comments from our colleagues, that is a very useful document. And yeah, it's, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
We did do several focus groups with community, like I think we did three focus groups. That's plus some money, and, you know, there's different things. But it, even in the work that I do, it's something that is right by my desk. We use that so much, so much. Yeah, it's really great.
And typically, we would release them every three years. Capacity-wise, I'm not sure I'm ready to, to handle that again in 2026, so we'll see. Yeah, yeah.
Fair enough. It's a big lift. I did have a few questions, not seeing other hands around the table, but I'll come back around if others have questions. There's just a line in the report that confused me a little bit on timing. It said, "Check requisitions will be submitted to the district pending approval of this summary report." And granting information will be sent to the applicants. And so I'm just curious on the timing, if that has already happened or if you're waiting for some form of approval here today? Because I thought we had delegated that to staff.
So just for clarity, this report is for the 2024 Community Enhancement Grants. So that's already all happened. We have gone through the 2025 Community Enhancement Grant Process. So typically, applications open in November. We adjudicate in December, and the hope is that funds go out late December, early January. As I said, because of just working through the financial pieces, it's taken a bit longer this year. So I'm not sure if 2025 is completely distributed. And there's also a group that has to be, a portion that needs to be redistributed. But so it may still.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't hung up on this meeting for delivery of funds. So that's good. I was just confused with some of the wording in the, in the reports. That's fine. My other question was around, if you, just if you have any reflections on balancing or if we've reached the right balance with regards to the application and reporting criteria and lift, given the values that we're actually granting? So some of these are like $1,000 grants. And I just think about the amount of burden that we put on. So there's like this balancing act between ensuring that there's fair and equitable and transparency with use of tax dollars. And also, if I'm a small nonprofit or just a group of volunteers putting in multiple. putting in multiple hours of time to get a thousand dollar grant is often sometimes deemed not worth it. And so I just, I'm curious if you have any reflections on where we're at in that balance of the process.
It's such a great question and it's one that we struggle with in every granting process. And, you know, ideally, you know, we would set a limit as to a minimum amount of, of a grant. But then you get these applications, it's like, oh, you know, this, a thousand dollars actually could help these folks with this piece and, and people are generally appreciative. We strive to keep the applications as simple as possible, the reporting as simple as possible. Um, I'm always available to chat with folks and help them through the application process or the reporting process. So it is my goal, and that's why we review the guidelines and the applications every year, just to make sure that we're keeping it as accessible and, and just keeping, you know, everything moving as opposed to stagnating because someone can't fill out an application question. Yeah, yeah. So that's a great question, but it's, we'll continuously work on it and try to make it as simple as possible.
That's great. I'm sure you have some lessons learned from the neighborhood small grants component too. Because that's such a great phenomenal program. Um, Counselor Pedengel, over to you.
Yeah, thanks. A, a little bit of a related question. I'm just wondering, you know, there's a fair number of established groups receiving funding. Um, do you have a sense if we're sort of, um, really sort of maximizing community benefit, um, by providing funding to established organizations? Or is there an opportunity to sort of encourage, um, new organizations to form and so on? And, and do you have any sense of, of like, if there's a, a better way? Or, uh, are we sort of achieving maximum benefit right now or?
So I can speak to the twenty twenty-five process, which ended up, uh, being quite different than the previous processes. And I think it was partially due to the district promoting the granting process in a different way and a little bit more, doing a little bit more outreach around it. And so we did receive quite different applications from newer groups this year. Um, and so I was really appreciative of that because as I'm the only one that works for the organization, I only have so much capacity to do outreach and everything that we'd like to do. Uh, so to the degree that in twenty twenty-five, the, our volunteer committee almost was overwhelmed with the amount of applications that we, we received. So we're definitely working in that direction. But what I do want to say also in answer to that is, you know, these established groups have been around for a long time and they're doing really great work. And it is really tough to get operational dollars. And so any way that we can help them in any way with, you know, programming or operational dollars, which this, some of, like the Food Bank probably uses for, uh, the funds for operational dollars as does Pearl Space. Uh, but I wouldn't want to, um, you know, make them feel like, you know, they weren't welcome to apply anymore. Like, it's really important that we continue to support these longtime groups that have been doing great work in community, as well as try and bring in the groups that we haven't necessarily reached before.
Thank you. Not seeing any further questions. And we will continue some of this conversation, our next item around community agreements, our, the community agreement policy. Um, so a motion to receive counsel, somebody's willing to make that move by Mayor Herford, seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Any comments? Go ahead.
Just, um, briefly, thank you for the, um, for all the work throughout, throughout the year. But, um, it was, it was great to sort of, um, pause and reflect on the successes of a, of a program. And we're obviously, um, uh, all striving to improve process and, and close, you know, answered, uh, unanswered pieces in, in policy. But there's a lot to celebrate here. And, um, so, um, thank you so much to you and, and the, the team for, for the work on it. I think it's really, um, important and impactful, uh, work. So much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments, Counselor Greenlaw? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to also express our thanks. Like, these are such, uh, important initiatives that you facilitate. And, um, and like I said, the, the documents that you're producing are invaluable. I keep mine in my little drawer next to where I sit too. So, uh, I just want to thank you for all the good work for helping to make our community a better place. So thank you.
Counselor Pedengel.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, add my thanks to the list and maybe foreshadowing the next discussion a bit. The one piece I am wondering, I, I take the point of not wanting to overburden organizations, uh, who are sort of stretched thin already. But I, I think there's such great work being done and to set the sort of expectation amongst the community and the demonstration of what community is and can be and the things we are six, uh, you know, being successful at as a community. I think there's incredible value about sharing that and showing that. And so like, I, I do sort of favor the idea of reports that show that, that some pictures and a brief description of every program, because I just see a, a huge amount of value in people seeing how much this community is doing, uh, with even just a little support. So, um, yeah, bit of foreshadowing there, but thank you so much for everything.
Uh, I too will just say my thanks. Um, and I think your comments around the spirit discussions around, uh, the committee. Um, so these grants used to be, uh, educated, educated by, um, council. And I'm so grateful that they aren't anymore in a more of a de-politicized sense. Um, but do you very much remember those, those passionate discussions and, and some of the challenges? With, you do have requests for twice as much funding as you actually have. Um, it, to Counselor Pedengel's point, is so impressive what our community is able to do with a few dollars. And so much of this really does go to the foundation of how we build community, how we create a sense of belonging, making sure that people feel seen and have places to be, um, and feel connected. And so, uh, thank you to you and your team for all the work that you do and for the continued reflections on how we improve process. I know that some of these you've raised a few times, uh, in past years and they come up again. Um, and I'm looking forward to being able to actually address them in this afternoon's discussion and actually provide some clear direction to you and the committee on some of those questions that you've raised multiple years in a row now. So looking forward to trying to tie that off, um, and, uh, and then get you a, a longer term, uh, partnership agreement or what are it, community agreements, I think is what we're calling them now. Um, but yeah, thanks for the work and I will call to question all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for the presentation and, uh, counsel will come back in ten minutes. So that is two forty. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back everybody to the District of Squamish Committee of the Whole for March twenty-fifth. We are on item four, sub one, which is the Community Agreement Policy and Community Grants Policy. Uh, and I will pass it over to Mr. Deo to, uh, kick us off.
Awesome. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Counsel. Uh, my name is Jay Deo, pronounced he and him, and I'm the Director of Recreation Culture. Uh, I'm joined by our new Manager of Cultural Services, Stephanie Parsons, and, um, also our consultant on this project, Patricia Huntsman, uh, Principal of Patricia Huntsman Culture and Communication. The objective of, of this presentation is to update council on the new Community Agreements Policy, formerly referred to as the Community Partnerships Policy and amended Community Grants Policy. Once reviewed, we're seeking council's support at Committee of the Whole to continue moving the new, new and amended policies towards approval. So the next slide provides a recap of the most recent presentation of these policies at the September tenth, twenty twenty-four Community of the Whole Meeting. So at the conclusion of that meeting, council passed three resolutions. Council directed staff to amend policies and bring for approval at a future council meeting. So staff have continued working to refine the policies, definitions and procedures and are presenting them today. Council approved one year, one year renewals of existing agreements. Staff have completed the extension with the identified groups until the end of twenty twenty-five. And council has directed staff to work towards a further, oh, four-year extension to these agreements to be included in the five-year financial plan. Upon the approval of these new and amended policies, staff will evaluate current agreements to the new Community Agreements Evaluation Framework to determine the potential for a new multi-year agreement. So this slide was shown at the last presentation. However, it's important as it reiterates the district's contribution to the nonprofit community. One pillar of the district's strategic plan is resilient people and relationships. Tactic one point four speaks to building relationships and community space by twenty twenty-six. The district has been providing support to nonprofit organizations in the following ways. Fee for service and operating agreements totaling almost one point four million dollars in twenty twenty-four is shown. Uh, note that this number includes arrangements with nonprofits for service delivery that have not been formalized through an official agreement. As well, this policy update and new evaluation framework that accompanies it will be beneficial for staff as it allows for efficiency, centralization and consistent evaluation of these agreements. Also supports nonprofits as it allows for potential funding stability through multi-year fee-for-service capital or operating agreements. In twenty twenty-four, the district also allocated a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars towards community grants. And, and in the same year, also allocated permissive tax exemptions totaling two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Lastly, the district provides land or space within buildings to thirty-seven nonprofits at below market value. I'll pass it over to my colleague Patricia, who will go over the next set of slides.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for enabling us to continue this work with staff and our community collaborators. A lot of detailed work that we have to present to you today, and I'd just like to thank everybody's contribution towards this and guidance as well as to recognize the contribution of my own team members, Bridgette McIntosh, Jao Dantas and Justine Boshanek. Thanks. Council recall from the fall that we began with about seven different core policies that we looked at from different jurisdictions. Layered onto that our own municipal expertise in working with many different local governments and regional governments around the province as well as some examples from out of Ontario and brought that and have been workshopping that since the fall with staff and community collaborators. So some of the pieces that we see there are certainly considering how best to align this for the district around current resources, staffing and funding, recognizing what those threshold mechanisms might be for the district. And to kind of get you up to speed on a present state and current state scenario as well as anticipating future needs for the district. Thanks. From our process learnings out in the community with our existing collaborators, there was definitely a desire to get to a more stable funding position where we saw multi-year agreements. That's also in keeping with best practice that we see from granting organizations to allow that stability out in the community as well as to get these organizations in an enhanced capacity state so that they can refine their delivery of services out in the community. So an important piece to remember in both of these policies that we're discussing here today is this is really important investment, community investment in capacity building that we're looking at today. So other pieces that we saw from existing collaborators that we heard, I should say, was a desire for a standardized process and approach for community agreements across the district. Council will recall that there was many different types of agreements at the district. And as Jay mentioned, some formalized, some informal. So we're bringing you to kind of catching up on that work to have something that's going to work going forward and provide a bit more of an equitable process going forward. Also, there was an openness for a process to improve the working relationships that are there aligned with the district's current context that you have in terms of staff capacity in this work and some clarity around how to resource and fund these going forward and how the district will work within communities and how much staff support again. What the role of staff is in this process going forward, in the procedures of implementing these policies going forward. Thanks. Just to keep in mind, there are another, a number of touch points with current and future policies at the district. So within the scope of this present policy is the evaluation of potential fee-for-service operating and capital agreements. I'll get into those definitions in one second. Also, the district in-kind support for future and existing agreements of nonprofits. So an important point for council to always remember is this is for nonprofit organizations out in your, in your community, your community collaborators are nonprofit organizations. And again, we've provided some, we've done the policy amendments, we've provided you with some proposal templates that we're seeing are really good examples from elsewhere and then, of course, customize those to the district's operations. So we've operationalized a lot of this already. Some things to certainly consider going forward as we, as we get into implementation of these policies. Out of scopes on this work is MOUs, agreements with for-profit entities, which is already covered under your procurement policy, a future sponsorship agreements, intergovernmental agreements, and some of the templates we realize will be needed to be refined going forward. So our recommendations, since our last presentation to council in the fall, is you will recall that there was a number of different sort of working definitions of partnership. After doing that scan, after consultation with the community, after looking and hearing from, from staff, we did arrive at community agreements policies. You'll see in districts, in jurisdictions elsewhere that sometimes they can be unsolicited funding request policies. And some of them have very technical, long names. We liked community agreements policies for a variety of reasons, but really going back to that core piece of this is a great investment in your community and certainly reflecting the capacity building nature of these types of agreements over time. So currently aligned with, with our district's policies and plans. Some, and certainly council's strategic plan, the OCP, et cetera. An important piece that we did focus on was the evaluation process. So we have established an intake and evaluation process and some of the criteria that you saw in the appendices that accompany this policy. We also were very careful to make sure that what can remain in the core policy versus what goes into the appendices so that this can be modified over time, particularly as you work through the implementation over the next few years on this. Some of the funding mechanisms that are identified, how agreements are funded and processed accordingly. If there is no existing funding, we can see that process, the proposals must be evaluated alongside the budgeting process. Some of the intended outcomes, of course, that we want to see with this are consistency in financial reporting and transparency on funding allocations of taxpayer money. Clarity on funding mechanisms for community agreements outside of the grant's budget. And fairness overall and transparency of the community as we just heard in the previous presentation and how things used to be done here at the district. And then improvement in alignment with the district's strategic plan and OCP and goals. And as well, district staff and local nonprofit providing services and operations for the district. This is just clarity on roles, who's doing what and their scopes and also introducing some processes there. And local nonprofits having the opportunity to enter into these multi-year agreements and reduce the precarity involved in applying for grants from year to year. So pleased with where we've arrived at. And as council will see, we got into further detail here, looking both at sort of examples from elsewhere, looking at we see as recommended procedure and again, rightsizing that and operationalizing that for what would make sense for the district. So again, a lot of time of staff sort of workshopping this, identifying current scenarios as well as anticipating future needs. So we have arrived at the three community agreement types. The fee-for-service agreement type, operating and capital agreements. Some of the existing agreements that we have with the community like Squamish Offroad Cycling Association that circa more appropriately aligned with operating. So we've anticipated sort of your current scenarios again as well as, as future scenarios that you might have. And our community agreements policy components. Again, we were very careful to put in our core pieces into the policy. Important highlight for council would be that the timelines align with annual budgeting process here. And then we took a lot of the procedural items and what we would recommend for agreement templates. Some of the evaluation criteria, you saw that rubric. We have that there for staff to work through as you work on implementing this, this policy. And then council have seen the flow chart that we included in the policy. And you'll see that there is a district initiated versus a community initiated. Both have the same sort of four steps involved in the procedures and evaluation. We wanted to again, make sure that this is, that these agreements are brought up so that they now align with districts' plans and commitments to inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility, truth and reconciliation and climate action, as well as reflect the, consider the community collaborators qualifications and project execution proposal. And of course, the financial viability and resource considerations. So really making sure that the organizations are thinking through how sustainable can this work be over time? And really paying attentions, of course, to, to costs and what that financial plan might look like. So we did clarify the option to initiate a pilot agreement to evaluate performance and impact before entering into a multi-year agreement. So allowing some of those newer organizations that the district may work with in the future to have that pilot testing phase with the district. So that's a really good option, as well as we wanted to respond to feedback from the existing collaborators. To have those multi-year agreements to provide that stability and see that see that continuity of work that was brought up in the, in the last presentation. So again, I think we have a good balance there of assessing viability of new contributors and, and our collaborators as well as those who are already providing existing services. Thank you. And we're just highlighting some of the considerations for implementation. So administrative capacity was a key component in this policy development and as well, again, those particular attachments that we have, how is this going to work? Again, really appreciate staff's guidance and insight on this. So staff were recommending and in consultation what we, what we saw elsewhere and through community collaborators was a phased implementation and resource requests being done again through that annual budgeting process. Still to come on this work, of course, is a number of communication support materials that will need to be developed, including a website, forms, intake and agreement templates. We're looking at a transition period, pilot period. So looking at the implementation, support and education with community collaborators and staff. So as staff work to implement the policy and based on staff capacity, there will be that transition period that may impact existing and new community collaborators, which is an important consideration. And staff also need to determine the capacity to evaluate existing agreements and intakes for new proposals during this transition. Staff will also need to be working across departments and externally with existing community collaborators and with the public at large to educate and train all of our new interest holders on the new policy and process. So there is, you know, some implementation considerations over the next, you know, year, year or two to get people on board. Sort of lots of, you know, education opportunities around this as we get the community up to speed. And no new agreements funded through taxation should be considered before the grant's budget has been restored to 1% is a, is a consideration there. And staff will be moving current non-grant agreements out of the community grants budgets and into relevant departmental operating budgets over a five-year period starting in 2026. And this shift resulting in an estimated 200,000 to 250 increase to the operating budget from the grant's budget. Over time, staff will then review all of the existing fee-for-service and operating agreements. Or sorry, existing agreements, we'll just say, with the district and coming from different funding sources outside of the grant's budgets. And these will be evaluated through the new policy framework to determine long-term viability and appropriate funding sources. So not easy turnkey work, some definite steps that will have to be further refined as we get into implementation over the next year or two.
So this slide shows the phased implementation considerations throughout multiple years. In 2025, staff will focus on developing the communications and administrative templates, communications of the new process with staff and developing an external communications plan, determining timelines and capacity to evaluate existing agreements and better understanding capacity requirements to implement and administer the policy. Pending capacity, staff aim to launch the district-initiated and community-initiated processes in 2026 and use the following five-year period to continuously monitor and adjust the operational implementation of the policy as, as needed. Between 2026 and 2029, staff will adjust district service levels to ensure capacity is prioritized. By 2030, staff anticipate the procedure to be, procedures to be refined. After this time, any existing agreement currently funded out of community grants budget will be moved to operating. And if they're successful in the, if they are successful in the evaluation process that we've been discussing. Any other existing district fee-for-service or operating agreements will also be evaluated and appropriately budgeted within the correct funding source if they are successful. Any new agreement, either district or community initiated, should have the appropriate funding source attached to it as a part of intake evaluation and approval process. For 2026 and beyond, any increase in the value of existing fee-for-service and operating agreements will be submitted through our budget process and subject to evaluation through this community agreements evaluation framework. These increases would be considered from the operational budget and not from the grants agreement, grants budget to ensure separation is maintained. Note, staff don't need to wait until the community grants budget is at 1% to implement this policy, the community agreements policy, as it's a separate process. Funding source identification of new agreements are criteria for evaluation and may also potentially come from externals or external sources. I'll pass it over to Patricia to run through the second policy, which is the amended community grants policy.
Thank you. So working, now addressing the community grants policy in particular. From a jurisdictional scan, again, looking at a number of ways that this could be aligned to the district's current state and your, your current capacity. So, and as council may recall, we sort of looked at where the district was in terms of its grant funding evolution and that we see different sort of typical trajectory there with municipalities in this work. So we have, we have aligned this to community specific clauses and needs that were identified from all of the community contributions in the engagement process. So really appreciate that again. And I've created an accompanying procedures handbook. It's something, an accompanying procedures handbook is something we also see with this type of grant. So that there is that administration piece that can be flexible over time in the lifespan of the policy. We, there is the recommendation to exclude applications seeking to fund solely distributed fees and charges. This was brought up earlier. And to provide other avenues for reduced cost or free options. So the waiving of fees and charges. We see that that could be done through other existing policies of the district that, that may need an update as well. Again, councils should keep in mind, there's with both of these policies, there's a number of touch points with other policies at the district. So just something to bear in mind. And of course, an important consideration that we see from this work, both here and elsewhere, is inflation mitigation and clauses to carry over funding, not disperse year after year and aligning increased funding pool to consumer price index. Also, learning from our community groups, grant, existing grant recipients and equity deserving and advocacy groups is expanding the grant programs to cover a wide net of need. We heard that in the earlier presentation, clear communications on what grant, grant programs exist and how and when to apply. Already hearing perhaps some benefits of socializing and helping to promote those grant opportunities as well. Reductions in barriers to entry, so making a simple process for, for applicants, increased support for grant applications and administration. Desire to balance funding, local service projects and tourism projects. And increased transparency on who gets what funding, how much they get and impact of the grants program to, to the discussion earlier. And desire to prioritize inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility as well as truth and reconciliation. So to keep in mind again, some, some of the pieces in scope for the update of this policy was to have evaluation of the community grant programs, which we did amend the policies accordingly. And identify which community grant programs are to be delivered by which community grant organization. So keeping in mind, some of those existing grant recipients would then go to your, the previous policy that, that we just shared. So our community, our community collaborators. Out of scope on this, our agreements with the community granting organizations, the grant program, community grant program design and implementation and permissive tax exemptions. So in terms of the summary of amendments that we've made to this policy, the definitions have been amended for clarity, which we've provided to you. Again, the desire to gradually work towards allocating that full 1% of grant funding clearly defined. clearly defining the grant programs in alignment with district priorities, which was something that needed to happen. A separate arts and culture grant program for indigenous projects and an additional community grant program for indigenous-led projects, programs or events. A policy clause to allow all community grant programs, granting programs to accept applications for indigenous projects. A policy clause is included to grant program evaluation principles to include IDA. A policy clause amendment to prohibit grant applications to cover district fees and service, fees and charges. And a policy clause amendment to allow groups to, who receive PTEs to apply for grants. And further change was a policy clause to allow groups to apply to all grants. So that was another question that had been identified earlier. Some of the intended outcomes of these changes and updates to the policy include consistency in financial reporting and transparency on funding allocations, grant budgets being allocated exclusively for grant programs and grant administration. And fairness and transparency to the community as well as improved alignment with the district's current work and strategic objectives and OCP goals and local nonprofits gaining clarity on district priorities and grant funding. Our new grant program areas include arts, culture, projects. This includes programs and events, public art, indigenous arts and culture projects and programs and events, social well-being and community connectedness projects, sports and recreation as well, environmental stewardship and climate action projects, idea-based projects and small neighborhood grants gap. So we tried to keep a balance of what the, there was from a desire from the community as well as aligned with the, once again, with the, with the district's objectives and goals and current capacity. Some of the considerations for implementing this policy include, once again, that staff will be working towards a phased implementation to align with the priorities and overall staff capacity. Which to require, one of the key pieces here is. Sorry, just looking at my nose here. Capacity required to implement and administer revised policy are expected to be less than the community agreements policy. So this will be an easier one to, to introduce. As there is less administrative charges, changes and processes. Additional resources will be required to effectively administer the policy will come through the regular budget process as required. A focus of implementation will be working with our community granting organizations on the implementation and public education surrounding these policy changes. So again, that time over the next year or two to be like, to be presenting this out in community and helping community groups along with this. So with that, work with the CGOs will be include building, updating and streamlining processes, implementing new grant programs over time, supporting CGOs on the communication plan to update process and changes. Staff will also be working across departmentally to determine and evaluate the process for the youth council moving forward. Pass it to Jay.
So this slide shows the phased implementation considerations throughout multiple years again. So in 2025, staff will focus on working with the community granting organizations to incorporate changes to the policy and the process. As Patricia spoke to, and will work with CGOs to communicate the changes to the public. Any capacity requirements determined to effectively administer the revised policy. Again, as noted, will be requested through the regular budget process. In 2026 and beyond, staff recommend incremental increases to restore the grants budget to 1% of the previous year's taxation, which is about 0.1% per year, and I'll show a slide on that in just a moment. This phased approach smooths, smoothes in the financial impact. By 2021 or 2031, the grants budget would be fully restored to 1%, allowing for the district to meet oversubscribed demands and implement new program grant areas that further align with district objectives and community needs. So this is that table that I just referenced. So as for the current grant policy, up to 1% of previous year's taxation can be allocated, as mentioned. To minimize budget impact over the next six years, the grants budget will be incrementally brought back to 1% by increasing by 0.1% each year. This allows, allows the grants program to gradually restore back to 1% to meet the over prescribed community needs without major taxation impact in, in or upfront in a given year. As the grants budget expands, staff will work with the CGOs to introduce new grant program areas to meet community need and further align with district policy and council objectives. So just to conclude, these are the recommendations from this presentation. So staff are recommending that council rescind the community partnership policy. They approve the community agreements policy as presented at the March 25th, 2025 community, the whole meeting. And approve the amended and renamed community grants policy as presented at the March 2020, March 25th, 2025 community, the whole meeting had to be that day, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the fulsome presentation and all the work. There's lots to dig into and I do want to recognize, hi Stephanie, I think this is the first time we're seeing you in this role. It's nice to have you at the table. Council questions? Go ahead, councillor Anderson.
Thank you. As I contemplate our council objective of building relationships with community groups to increase community capacity and resources. One of the categories of groups that comes to mind are those that are impatiently waiting to get started on a heritage strategy implementation for Squamish. And my question will be where that fits in, and I'll just elaborate a bit. Currently, we have consultant. We're, we projected to spend money on consultants and we're projected to wait until there's staff time to deal with this. Meanwhile, we have community groups impatiently thinking that we can step in here now. And so building that capacity and delivering from the community. So as I look at other examples, we've got, I've got here Smithers and Mission. That is exactly what they did. The community group stepped forward to the municipality and said, look, we can help, we can deliver this for you. And the Smithers Heritage Registry is undertaken by a nonprofit and just been delivered to council and approved. The Mission Heritage Commission Terms of Reference, similar things going on. So my question is, as we look at the definition of community collaborator in the agreements policy. A collaborator must be a society incorporated into the B C Societies Act or a registered charity. How, where does a heritage commission fit in? Or a coalition of groups such as worked in Smithers that may not necessarily be a society? Is this out of scope? Are there organizations or solutions of partnerships that, that aren't going to fit that definition in the, as community collaborator?
Through the chair to mayor and council, thank you for the question. It's a great point of clarification. We see with the community agreements policy and its implementation that there would be a number of ways to, to go about such a type of agreement. It definitely would fall within your, the, your community agreements policy. That's where that would live. It wouldn't be with procurement policy, for instance. A commission as such could be working with a local heritage groups. It could, that the agreement could form with one of those groups and, and execute the, the review or whatever the work would be to be done with clarified agreement and, and key components of deliverables with that organization. So we do sometimes see through these types of policies where it can be one lead organization doing the work on behalf of local government out in the community. As long as that, that community collaborator then has sub-agreements with its working partners. So that would be one way that that could be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And in fact, that reminds me that that was the solution in Smithers, where the museum was the lead partner among a cluster of local volunteer groups. My second question concerns a reference in the community grant policy under 1.4 Community Grant Programs, Item B. Public art in private spaces. Why would we be concerned with public art in private spaces? Currently, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent on public art in private spaces through our community amenity contribution program with developer, development proposals. But why the highlighting of private spaces on this particular item rather than public realm?
Thank you. We did clarify that to be, to be more generally public art because it could be a point of confusion and we understand that. So thank you again through, through the chair to mayor and council in answering this question. Where that came from was actually in our consultation with the community, there was a real desire to see the opportunity for grants to go to organizations who may want to initiate some types of public art project, maybe be on the side of a cafe or some local business or entity that's in the public realm. So an important consideration when we're working in art and public spaces is usually the terminology I call it instead of just public art. But an important consideration is our, our sightlines in the visual realm of Squamish. They could be from a pedestrian point of view, they can be from a vehicle point of view. They may technically be on private spaces and private land. However, they are within the public visual realm. So this would allow an opportunity, if you would think of a coffee shop, maybe downtown, that would put out a public art call and a team of artists could then go and do this work. Maybe they do a mural project, et cetera. So I know it's a tricky terminology in private spaces, like it's just going in people's homes. No, that's not what we're talking about. But again, a way to build on the animation of Squamish's community that you're already doing a really good work on and really recognized for. So this really did come right from community consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. My third. My third question concerns the, an item in, under implications budget in the staff report to council. And I'll just read it out. Staff will retain 50% of the grant budget for grants and distribute the remaining 50% towards community collaborators under the community agreements policy. My question is, why this apportionment is, would it not be desirable to have some flexibility? Rather than the, is it not an arbitrary amount, that 50%? And are we going to, is this not going to evolve and are we ready for 50 here, 50 there? Or is there rationale that you might explain for that 50-50 split?
Thanks for the question through the chair. So the 50% that is listed in the report is not in the policy. So we have some flexibility, but it's a recommendation based on our existing estimation of fee for service and operating agreements that we're moving out. So yeah, that is essentially what that 50% is, is what we're moving out and of that grants budget into operational. And the other 50% is remaining and gradually being brought back up to 1%.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll go councillor Peddingill and councillor French. And Mayor.
Yeah, thanks. I'll start with some questions on the community agreements policy. The first one, and I appreciate the diligence in reviewing community agreement policy or partnerships, I should say. I may have got the acronym wrong, but anyways, the CAP. The, the. I guess, do we envision a timeline though for processing these? Or do we have a sense of what we think that might look like in practical terms?
Yeah, through the chair, thanks for the question. We do have some timelines. We're reluctant to put timelines on this until we determine implementation of this policy and the administrative capacity required and what's available. Based on some best practices, there is, you know, some general timelines we've estimated. District initiated processes could take 10 to 12 weeks roughly from intake to agreement creation. And then community initiated processes can take eight to 12 weeks roughly. Or if they're more than $75,000, because there's an additional step required. It would take potentially 16 to 20 weeks. So those are estimates and again, we'll fine tune those as we operationalize the policy.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. And that's an area of concern that we're not sort of creating too much work for ourselves or the community in doing this. I think in my mind, one of the key reasons for pursuing this is community empowerment and ownership. But I didn't see that in the criteria. Did I miss that? Or can you speak to how that gets incorporated?
Thank you to, to the chair, to mayor and council. We have aligned this with the OCP and of course, the strategic plan governing principles. The exact wording you used, if you could repeat it.
I think there's an idea of, of yes, achieving what's in the OCP and so on, but having, empowering the community to do it and giving the community ownership over those tasks.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's going to come through. These are really investments in community capacity building. And through your multi-year agreements, you will see that there'll be basically deliverables, right, to, to achieve for the district, right? So getting those community groups in a state where they can build their capacity to be able to execute on these agreements and getting them to like a more robust state over the life of the multi-year agreement. So it's sort of in the doing of the work. It isn't explicitly written out there in, right up front in the policy. But that would be the nature of the difference between that and say a procurement policy or procurement type of agreement where we're just sort of seeing more of a transactional deliverable on behalf of the district. Whereas through community agreements, you see through, through that work that there is building of skills within those organizations over time. So I think it's sort of in the doing of the work that what you're hoping will be achieved, if that helps.
I will also add that under the example evaluation rubric, section two talks about collaborator qualifications and project execution. So through that process of evaluation, we'll be able to surmise the capacity that is being brought forth by the, by the community collaborator. So yeah, we'll get a sense of it through evaluation as well.
Okay, that, that's one for me, just feedback wise, where I wondered if, if that sort of made sense to include as one of the, the sort of, as we're evaluating what we think, you know, impact this will have on empowerment and ownership. And I'm glad you raised the procurement policy because I had a couple of questions around that. I'm wondering if we should be changing our procurement policy to actually favor this mechanism, the CAP mechanism for achieving things like, is there a sort of a next step in terms of procurement policy here?
Mr. Millie. Sorry, I'll go to Mr. Dale and then if you want to start, Mr. Dale?
Through the chair, that's exactly what I was going to do is just defer to Craig.
Go ahead, Mr. Millie.
Thanks. And thank you for the question. Craig Millie, manager of procurement and through the chair. Great question. This one, and let me just say, I've, I've had the opportunity to meet with this team that's presenting and I'm glad to be here today to support them. We've met numerous times on, on the interplay of the procurement policy with this, this new approach on, on grants and, and community agreements. Trying our best to follow best practices in, in other communities. One of the things I cautioned the team on early on, and I'll, I'll just raise it here. And it's, it's in response to your question, councillor Peddingill. And it's a bit counterintuitive. We think that this is, one of the things I've got to be careful of is distinguishing between what is procurement and what is not procurement. And anytime we do business with not-for-profits or philanthropic groups, it is by nature outside of the procurement world, we actually get some flexibility. And that's not afforded to many sectors where we can, we can do that. Now that being said, it, it doesn't mean we, 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 we let these things just happen. It is important that there is a process. And I'm confident based on what I've seen here, that there is a, a well-thought-out, very well-laid-out process for application intake, for selection, for ultimately for signing of various agreements. Those, if we stay outside the procurement regulations, those are based on a much broader set of standards about public scrutiny, about reasonableness. If you want to know the technical term, we call them Wensbury Rules, which is the, the standards that govern all of government decisions. We, we have to base it on reasonable actions done by a reasonable organization. The procurement world, if you bring it into my world and regulated procurement, much higher standard of, of conduct in the selection process. The other, the other issue that comes into play here is the potential for. The other, the other issue that comes into play here is the potential for this to conflict with trade agreements. We have, we have flexibility below the existing trade agreements, below $75,000 in valuation. Basically, that's, that's for the district to determine the rules. But the minute the valuation goes over those thresholds, we become subject to some very stringent rules. Very difficult, and I would suggest nigh and impossible to blend together a not-for-profit and a for-profit competition that I would, that would meet the standards required in public procurement. I'd be hard pressed to say that we could do that. So it is, it is best practice to keep the not-for-profit competitions very clearly distinguished, very separate from procurement. We'll go through great lengths to keep that at arm's length. And it really is about protecting the district, giving you the, the flexibility to work with these community groups, these not-for-profits. It's a different motivation. It's a different criteria. These things, these things don't live in the same world as the for-profit business world. Now that being said, do we need to? Even the current policy we have with the district, the current procurement policy does not prevent us from engaging with, with not-for-profits and community groups. That's, that's clear. Even if it's not explicit in our local policy, it's, it's explicit in the trade agreements, which, which ultimately govern the, the policy. So I, I would come at this, and like I say, it's, it's a counterintuitive approach that you might be surprised by, but it's safer for us to keep a distinction and a firewall between these two types of process. What I, I've advocated with the team and what I see reflected here is, we call it a mirroring process. It follows a process that looks an awful lot like the procurement process. We have open calls, we have evaluation criteria, we have rubrics, we have, you know, panel, panel decisions. Those are all great things, but we want to make sure we don't, we don't bring this into the procurement world where it's governed by a much higher standard. And we would probably find ourselves in trouble, in, in trouble trying to reconcile a proposal from a not-for-profit with a proposal from a for-profit. The other thing I'll just leave you with here, one of the things that has changed in the public procurement space in the recent years since 2017, when the trade agreements were brought into effect, they also created a new mechanism. It's called a bid protest mechanism. So suppliers who are, feel that any public owner has, has done something wrong. They have an easy avenue to protest those procedures now under the trade agreements. It's not like the expense of going to court, getting lawyers and legal fees. It's an adjudicated process, but it's an easy process for them to engage with. Again, I wouldn't want to bring you into that world of allowing for not-for-profits to be able to dispute your decisions ultimately in a very easy, very cost-effective way. So for all of those reasons, that, that's just one of the things, back to your question, though, we don't really need to amend the procurement policy to do any of this. We're just taking advantage of the natural carve-out for any business we do with not-for-profits and community groups. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thanks. That answered that and a whole bunch of follow-up questions I had. So I really appreciate that. Leaves me with one, though. So we've got something that's, as a district, we want to do, we feel it's going to be under $75,000. How do we decide which path we go procurement versus CAP? Does staff currently have an understanding that we always go CAP first? Or is there some sort of, what, what makes that decision?
And I'll, thank you for the question through the chair. I'll, I'll just jump in from a procurement standpoint. We would recommend that that follows this, this new process being defined. It's not that we in procurement couldn't help and support a team if they wanted to engage with not-for-profits. But again, it's, it's sort of in that broader sense of trying to keep a natural separation from the world of the not-for-profit, from the world of for-profit. That's kind of the world the procurement process deals with.
Is he, Ms. Hunsman would like to jump in as well?
Thanks. Through the, through the chair, to mayor and council to answer the question. You'll see on page seven in the policy, there's the district initiated versus community initiated. And in that mechanism, you should be able to figure that piece out. So if it's a district initiated process versus a community initiated process, then staff will have the time to evaluate which, where it should go. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. I have, on this point, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I had questions around this point as well, and I think I'm partway there, but the district-initiated agreement process makes sense, but it doesn't, doesn't clearly state when staff would go to that process. When would the district initiate that? It feels like there's something missing that's before this. So the district wants to initiate a process, this is the process to use, but what decision? How do we guide that that is? How would staff come to, or the district come to the conclusion that that was what they wanted to do? That piece seems to be missing for me still from the explanations that we've seen. And I think is what councillor Pedengill was trying to get at.
We, through the consultation with staff, there are a number of existing, what we're called partnership agreements, right? And there are a number of pieces that are being done out of the community that might not have yet been formalized appropriately to where you are in terms of the work that needs to be delivered out in the community. So I think through your annual budgeting process is going to be the opportunity for staff to identify these, these potential projects and these potential agreements that could be initiated on behalf of the district. I realize it's not, it's quite clear, like, oh, how is the district-initiated opportunity going to arise? But I would say probably from this table, your work on your strategic plan, as well as implementation items that arise through the work of the district over time. You now have a new sort of mechanism for, for addressing that.
So the, I, I would see that the first wave is sort of well-identified. And these are the things we need to touch, to bring into the new, the new system. And then I think, to me, this is an area, I'll accept that, that, I accept the, the response. I do think that, that, at that sort of future state, I appreciate that we've somehow had a time machine here today. We're talking about 2030, 2031. But somewhere between here and there, I think some refinement and maybe elsewhere in our processes that identify when this piece of the process would be used would be helpful. But I, I think that that's likely down, down the road a little bit. So I'm okay with that. But thank you.
Councillor French, go ahead.
My colleagues go out ahead of me, so I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Mayor Herford, then councillor Hamilton. That was yours. All right, councillor Hamilton, over to you.
Thanks very much. I'm really excited to see this work coming forward and moving forward. I really hope that we're going to be able to use this to leverage community empowerment, really. So my first question is about the three sort of types of agreements, fee for service, operating and capital agreements. I completely see how these are three of, in a way, distinct types of agreement. But I suspect there's probably a lot of overlap where an operating agreement is going to have an aspect of capital. Are we sort of pigeonholing each agreement? So it'll be hard to get from one type to another? Or do we have a, are there mechanisms here for somebody to have an operating agreement that happens to have a capital ask in year two or three or something?
Through the chair and mayor and council, thank you for the question. And it's certainly one that we discussed at length amongst staff and, and, and we aren't pigeonholing, we're actually giving you some flexibility because absolutely some of these groups may start as operating and then with their enhanced capacity to be able to then do some additional fever service delivery on behalf of the district. So in those individual agreements, you would be able to address these different types of relationships that the district has with its community collaborators. So I don't see that as being too rigid at, at this point. So definitely some, some opportunity. Again, a really important point for, for mayor and council and staff in this work is, you know, there, there will be absolutely some fine tuning as we go through this sort of pilot implementation phase over the next year or two. And definitely some opportunity for some, some refinement in, in the proceduralization and operationalization of, of this work. So, thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks. So, so I'll just try to reflect back what I heard. So a community organization isn't going to need to have a capital agreement with us and an operating agreement with us. They'll be able to have both and it'll be able to, we'll be able to retain some fluidity. Yeah? Okay. My second question is regarding timelines for applications. So whenever there's a granting program, whenever, whenever there's, there's a decision-making process that has multiple applicants, when you get those applicants, these applications on the table tends to matter. So for example, if we have an open application period where a community collaborator can apply at any time and we can make that decision at any time, we may get into situations where you have sort of an early bird gets the worm. If you've made the application early, you get some money, but then we've made all our decisions and, and we don't, we don't have funding left. Of course, that's balanced against the requirement to have applications come in at a particular time. Right? Say every, every year, and then we consider all applications at once. How, my understanding is that we're going to be receiving applications whenever community members submit them? And is there any way for us to look at? Or compare one application to another? Because when they're separated in time, it seems to be difficult.
Just a point of clarification and through the chair to mayor and council, thank you. I'm jumping in here. Just a question, were you referring to the community grants policy? And the work that would be done by community granting organizations? Or are the community collaborative, community agreements policy?
Sorry, I was speaking to the community agreements policy. And of course, yes, I see where the confusion is because I use the grants as an, as an example. I see agreements as sort of long-term grants. Sorry, loose, loose speaking there. I mean, the agreements policy.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the clarification. So that would be done through the annual budgeting cycle. So there would definitely be sufficient notice to those organizations. These, again, I don't want to use the old word of partnerships, but reflecting the nature of these agreements. These are, you know, trusted viable community entities that the district's already working with in our existing state, right? So you're kind of like your few organizations. So there's already really good communication happening there and, and regular relationships already in place. But again, this is through the annual budget cycle. They will know the, when applications would need to be in in April and then, you know, track that over the, the next few months to get into, to council's budget. So I think that process would be clear because it does tie in. And this is the work that staff would be doing. This is the staff consideration of their time use in, in working with these collaborators. Because it would be either district-initiated or community-initiated. So I suppose the scenario could be that an opportunity is brought forward and it is, it may need to wait a budget cycle potentially. That is a consideration.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, sorry, through the chair, if I can ask, add as well, I think it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to evaluate, if proposals come in at different times. The, the best practice that we've seen is that they're rolling applications, that you can't just stop and receive applications or wait for applications to come. You can, though, we have mechanisms in here to evaluate the effectiveness of an agreement and whether or not it should be renewed. So they, they're not necessarily going to last forever. They could be renewed in short order to give other organizations an opportunity for a comparable service capital, whatever it was. So there is ways to kind of address that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you. And I think that leads into my next question. Do we have, one of the things that I see as a potential large benefit to having a, a, a community agreements policy where all of our organizations, all of our not-for-profit organizations are under a similar umbrella agreements with us, is that we can really compare and contrast, how many, how much of our resources are we giving to one area of not-for-profit community and how much we're giving to another area? So is there a plan to, to bring forward a summary view of which of all of the communities, community agreements that we have at budget time in one place? So that we can look at them collectively?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair to mayor and council, I think that's an important consideration going forward as, as you work on this implementation. Again, we're, we would be focused on in sort of the pilot sort of year one to year two transition, where you'd have sort of your existing collaborators, moving them out of the grants policy into the community agreements policy. So you'd start there. And then over time, I would think that would be a piece that you'd be able to bring forward because it'd be part of annual budgeting. Council would be able to see the breakdown of, of who would, what types of organizations are falling into these agreements versus who, who might still be left out.
Thanks very much. And yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a few questions of my own, just building on councillor Hamilton's, even Mr. Dale, your initial presentation slide of how we've been supporting nonprofits over the years. So the 1.36 million in fee for service and operating, 185 in community grants, 282 in permissive tax exemptions, like that breakdown to me was new and really, really helpful just to think about the different types of partnerships that we currently have and how we might start to characterize those. So I think that's a good starting point. And then we can maybe build on there to get to councillor Hamilton's piece of like, which aspects of our OCP and our strategic plan are we trying to get to with, with those numbers? But in terms of my questions, there's an effort to try and build back up to the 1% of general taxation for the grant programming with a proposal to start at 0.5% for 2026. I'm just curious, do we know what we were at for the 2025 budget? So like, is 2026 an increase from where we are today? And Ms. Morris might be able to call a friend here.
Yeah. Through the chair, I'll pass it over to Sarah.
Thank you. Through your chair. When staff provided the breakdown in September, it was the community grants budget was approximately 0.5% going towards the community grant programs with 0.5% going to those community partnership agreements at that time. And so moving forward into 2026, as taxation increases, the 0.5 will have a little bit of a boost, as will the 0.5 for those agreements too. So staff will be working to allocate those funds accordingly. And then with the increase each year, they can kind of allocate that funding with incremental included in the agreements.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you. And then my other question, I think, building off of like the process piece for the community agreements policy, how do we ensure that there is a certain level of nimbleness in the process? So I heard like eight to 12 weeks. If I'm a relatively small organization who's looking to seek or apply for like a provincial or federal grant, that eight to 10 week delay can like make or break my application. And so I'm just curious about like how we balance that in this process? While still trying to encourage those folks to do that good work and recognize that there's a staff capacity limitation here.
Through the chair, I can start by answering this question. Part of the plan for the rollout for the community agreements policy is public communication around the policy and the timelines, the financial calendar, the budget process. So these organizations have a clear line of sight on, on our process. So ideally, they can align with those. Aside from that, it really, that review of our internal staff capacity to determine what the timelines look like. So hopefully we'll have a better sense of that throughout this year as we evaluate. And then we feel like we need more resource to be more nimble. We'll put that in through a budget request.
Okay, that's super helpful. Okay, that's super helpful. A few other small pieces that I picked up on it, just in your presentation. In one of the learnings in our engagement with, um, current collaborators, there was a comment around balancing the grants program for local services and tourism projects, which just kind of was a flag for me because it's our community enhancements grants, so grants which are not typically tourism focused. I'm just wondering if someone can speak to that comment.
Thank you through the chair. Um, that comment was related to, um, the agreements with Sorka and the BIA related to trails and events. And so, uh, currently that the 0.5 of the grants budget is being allocated towards those agreements. And there was a feeling that it might be, um, unbalanced, um, in terms of like those being potentially tourism and community initiatives.
Interesting feedback. Thank you for that additional context. That's helpful. Um, and then the other one that caught my eye was the inclusion of the review of youth council under the community grants policy. So I appreciate that they do have a granting stream per se, but it's actually an initiative driven by council that is part of our operating budget. And so I'm just curious how we consider that in, in this process.
Thank you. Um, through the chair again, um, there was requests last year for a budget increase of $10,000 for the youth council program, which is currently being funded by the grants program as well. So there is some funding, um, coming out of that 1% budget and being allocated towards the youth council. Um, and I think staff are currently looking at that program, um, and potentially reviewing, uh, the delivery of that to find efficiencies.
And can I just clarify that $10,000 is in addition to the 20,000 that council allocated in our operating budget?
Through your chair, but that's correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then just one more on the grant policy. In section 1.3, it speaks to being able to provide funding for extraordinary circumstances. But there's still limitation in section 1.3 C4 that the total grant funding for the year inclusive of the extraordinary request would not exceed the 1%. And I'm just curious why that's still in there, given that this is around extraordinary measures? And so why council wouldn't have the discretion in the policy to go above that 1% if it was an extraordinary request?
Thank you through your chair. Um, that, um, piece of the policy was, um, implemented when the policy was reviewed in 2020. Um, and the purpose of that was because council didn't have incremental, um, agreements with its grant program, um, operators. Um, and so a portion of the grant budget was unallocated for a number of years. Um, now moving forward, we are looking to fully use the grant, uh, budget. However, if a community group, if there was some budget remaining for some reason, and if a community group was to come forward, council would have the option to fund from that, um, from that budget item. And additionally, you could find funding elsewhere if they so desired. But the idea is that the grant budget will never, or the grants budget will never exceed that 1%. So you wouldn't be considering a major grant to come from that, um, pot that went over 1%.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. Go ahead, Counselor Peddengill.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, some questions about, uh, the community grants policy and I'll pick up on that 1.3C uh, section and extraordinary, um, circumstances. Is, is the intent or the understanding, the way it's written, that to qualify, you'd have to meet all of the conditions as opposed to a condition?
Through the chair to Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, there's been a lot of detailed works. We just needed to double check. But it was that the, um, all of the criteria, uh, was, was the intention there?
Okay, that, that's good. I, I, I support that. And I guess my concern is, is just, you know, we've done a lot of work to, um, delegate this to community groups to decide who gets the money and just, and really cautious about opening a door or we end up adjudicating a bunch of grants again. So, uh, glad to see there's some good guardrails there. It just, going back to an earlier topic we had today, I, I think, uh, it is important that we retain reporting from all projects. You know, I'm not looking for, you know, a lawyer and an accountant to sign off on the financials of every project. But, you know, some photos and a bit of a narrative or video or something just to, I, I think, again, there's incredible value in the community, seeing what we do collectively is, is so important. I want to pick up on some discussion we had around district facilities and, and granting there. My understanding had been that where we've moved to there is we have a general not-for-profit rate. So, uh, a sort of a, um, we absorb some of the costs or the taxpayers do. And, and so rather than people going through a process and maybe you get it for a discount or nothing or whatever, it's just everyone gets the discount rate automatically as a not-for-profit. Is that the way we are planning to go for now? Or, because it sounded like maybe we were reconsidering that process?
Thank you, uh, through the chair. Currently we do have a nonprofit rate, um, in the fees and charges by law. However, there are, um, a few events that occur annually, um, where there are broader community benefit. Um, and those requests often come through the community grants, uh, requesting funding to pay for, um, the fees so that it's not a burden to, um, those um, event organizers or community groups. And so, uh, the path forward will be for, um, staff to bring forward a fees and charges by law and potentially create some, um, criteria for the manager of recreation and culture, um, to, um, waive those fees. Or maybe there is a, a specific set of criteria where the fees don't apply, such as community events for youth, uh, would be a, an example of the, of the circumstance.
Okay, thank you. And then a last question, and maybe this was in a previous iteration of this policy or maybe I just missed where it is, but at one point there is a concept of not, uh, funding the same program year after year. And, you know, maybe we fund something for, for two years. And the idea was to, to give organizations an opportunity to get their legs under them, but then to become self-sufficient so we could continually sort of start new programs and, and build that capacity on an ongoing basis as opposed to just funding the same thing. And so I'm just looking for clarification on, have we abandoned that from now, for now? Or did I miss that? Or is that a consideration in, in our granting criteria?
Um, I think where the opportunity is there is you now have this new mechanism through your community agreements policy that perhaps that ongoing work that an organization's doing that was, uh, provided through grant funding, that they could then work towards a pilot agreement, um, and, and do their work through a community agreements policy. That would be, uh, you know, once they get to that sort of, assuming they meet the criteria and that could be district initiated or that could be community initiated, right? So if that organization continues to deliver something over time and they're building up, they get their legs under them, as you say, then that could be an opportunity for them to go and, and be funded through that other mechanism.
Appreciate that. So then on that note, should we have an explicit sort of criteria in the community grants policy about sort of a, a duration for funding a specific project year over year?
Thank you, uh, through the chair from the community engagement, um, that took place in the early stages of this policy development. Um, there was a, a need expressed by community for, um, smaller grants for these operational like, or programs that occur, that occur year after year. Um, there has been a reduction in provincial and federal support for, um, grant program, in grant programs that we've, that has been experienced, uh, by the community. And so, um, although these requests come back year after year, there is that, uh, lack of operational support provincially and federally, federally that we're filling a gap for, um, with these grants. And they're often a low enough, um, dollar figure that, um, it wouldn't warrant, uh, a multi-year agreement for a $5,000 to $10,000, um, value. And so I think that there's, I believe that they're, they're well-placed as they are. Um, and I wouldn't, staff wouldn't recommend, um, staff, uh, council limiting, uh, the, the grant requests for those operational pieces that are important to the community.
Thank you for that response. I have Counselor Anderson and then, uh, council, we'd like to, there are some recommendations for us to consider.
Thank you. I note that in the, between the two policy, uh, proposals under guiding principles, there's three principles that are shared between the two documents. But the grants policy has four additional ones and they are namely increases community capacity, encourages and fosters community involvement and volunteerism, benefits district residents, and demonstrates cost sharing, cost effectiveness. It would seem to me that as explicit principles, those four that are not in the grants, in the agreements policy would, would better fit, be a better fit in the agreements policy. Is there a reason for the discrepancy in the listing of guiding principles between the two policies?
Through the chair, thanks for the question. Um, I believe what you're referring to, those guiding principles were already in the previous, uh, community grants policy, but were not, um, adapted to the community agreements policy. So, um, that's something that can be updated, uh, to council as well.
Thank you. Happy to move the staff recommendation. I haven't got it in front of me.
Would you like to explicitly include that those principles be added to the community agreement policy? As part of your resolution?
Yes, I would be happy to do so if we could, if our minute taker is clear on that proposal that the, uh, essentially that the guiding principles as stated in the grants policy be duplicated in the agreements policy.
Wonderful. Do I have a secondary to Counselor Anderson's motion seconded by Counselor Greenlaw? Any comments? Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I'll try to be efficient. I have a few. Firstly, there are a couple of references to arts and culture in the grants policy. I will assume that arts and culture includes heritage. And I would like to suggest that we should take up the practice of the John Ray, the former longtime manager of cultural planning and development at Whistler. He insisted that arts, performing arts and heritage are all part of culture. So why don't we just use the term culture as all, all encompassing? It's practical and helps that we don't lose things through the cracks. Secondly, uh, there is reference in the grants policy under principles aligned with the council's strategic plan governing principles. Why not the strategic plan objectives as they both will change over time? But rather than highlighting governing principles, which are quite vague and broad, we do have some council objectives that we've worked hard on and that might be more appropriate, something to consider in future. Thirdly, in the, uh, report to council from, actually two of them last year, uh, from Sarah Morris in her former role, uh, highlights the council objective 1.4 quite squarely and, uh, and works from it. However, in the present report to council, council objective 1.4 on building relationships and increasing community capacity is missing. We're only referring to a tactic, actually incorrectly, but so it's not cited. Um, and I guess I'm teasing staff about this. I like to see our council objectives highlighted appropriately. Finally, uh, Ms. Morris, last year on, in September, presented us with a whole catalog of district community support channels and grants and agreements were only two. There are several and we shouldn't lose sight of that. And they include storage facilities that we offer groups, we offer office space, we also offer leases. And right now we have two clusters of community organizations that are really frustrated with our inability to keep up with lease agreement and renewals. And, uh, it's really a frustration. It prevents these, or these groups, and there are several, um, from fundraising, from investing in their site and from delivering programs and services to the community. So I guess my point here, my final point is that we should not only restrict ourselves to grants and agreements, but the other support channels that we offer community groups and make sure that they're in focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further comments from council? Go ahead, Counselor Peddengill.
Yeah, I appreciate the work. I had some things that I needed some clarification on. And I think with, uh, my colleagues' adjustment and inclusion of the principles, uh, I, I think that puts a fairly neat bow and, and wraps up most of what I was concerned about. I, I would sort of maybe hope and assume that we might see the criteria in the final draft, uh, reflect those principles for the community agreement policy. Uh, I think I got it right that time. Uh, but I think because that, that, and the principles frame it slightly differently, but that community empowerment, ownership piece is a really critical piece. And I think that's captured by the principles. And so, uh, making sure we are, have that lens on things is, is important. And, and like I said, the other clarifications and so on, I received, um, makes sense to me for now. Uh, and, and so I'm excited to be moving forward with this. It's something we've talked about for a long time. And so I'm glad to, uh, know this will be coming for ratification soon. Thank you.
Any further comments, Counselors? I, Mayor Herford?
Thank you. I'm happy to support this. I, um, appreciate the evolution since last week, since last we saw it. And I know there's been extensive, um, discussions with, uh, with the community and with, uh, the various departments, uh, potentially affected in the, uh, inside the district. So, um, happy to support and I appreciate the, um, uh, the sort of the modified, uh, resolution here by Counsel, Counselor Anderson. I do, I do think strengthens it, um, overall. And I think more clearly articulates what we're setting out here to, to do together. So, um, thank you so much. Look forward to seeing, uh, this, this next step.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton next.
Yeah, thanks very much. Uh, I'm really happy to see this coming forward. I sincerely hope and I sincerely believe that, uh, the new community agreements plot policy and the clarification of the community grants policy, we can really help to leverage our community, uh, help them take ownership of the pieces of the community that they feel, um, feel committed to improving. So I look forward to seeing this unroll in the coming years. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Greenlaw. Go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work in bringing this forward. I've mentioned quite a few times in this room that the community partnerships agreements are something that I'm really excited about. I think to my mind, it's such an important and economical initiative that the district could be supporting. So I'm, I'm really excited to see where, where this all goes and, and what kind of ideas come to fruition. And I want to echo some of Counselor Pettingill's comments about the community empowerment and ownership piece. I really hope that, uh, these, these community partnership, uh, agreements are going to be an opportunity for the district to empower and, uh, empower groups from the community and just step out of their way and, and watch these projects blossom. Um, so to my mind, this is just such a great way to engage community in their governance and also empower them to, to really improve our community. So thank you very much.
I'm sticking together hands. I too will echo my thanks to staff and our consultant on this work. I think we heard from community loud and clear that there's a desire for better clarity on how these partnership agreements, um, fee for service agreements kind of come to fruition. And I think that's also true internally at the district, um, that providing a bit of process for staff and council to better understand how these come to fruition will be helpful for everybody, um, both outside of the building as well as inside the building. It's one thing that our previous mayor Karen Elliott always said is that, um, we are often best positioned to support others to achieve our shared goals in community. And this is, I think, one clear way that we can do that. Um, and so, uh, really happy to see this move forward. Uh, and I think both, uh, the community agreements policy and the community grants policy as they are amended here today, really provide, uh, that sense of clarity that we've been looking for around this table and that I think our community has been asking for. And I really do look forward to trying to move us back towards that 1% going towards the grant programming. I think, um, that's part of the gray area is like, how is it that we've been actually been budgeting for this? And some of them fall in operating, some of them don't. And so I think providing that clarity, it's a good reminder to the L's of us around the table as we start to see those budgets move into operating that will, um, impact our tax requisitions and impact our tax potentially. And so that's one thing to remember as we look into our budgets going forward. But if we do want to get back to that 1% for granting, knowing how impactful each of those dollars are, whether it's a thousand dollar grant or a $5,000 grant, seeing what it's doing in community is something that I'm committed to moving forward. So, um, looking forward to those future discussions at budget. But I do think that this is an important piece of work and happy to support the motion on the floor. Thank you for the good work. With that, I will call to question, not seeing any other hands, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the work. And I'll go to Mayor Herford from, anything further on this? Mayor Herford moves termination, seconded by Counselor French. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much, everybody. Sorry, we're a bit late today, but we Motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much, everybody. Sorry, we're a bit late today, but we got through it all. Thanks.